Good evening, everyone. We will start in just one minute. All right, I'd like to call the regular City Council meeting of September 1st, 2020 to order. Let the record reflect that myself, Mayor Motazidi will be teleconferencing from home. Votes this evening will be recorded using the city's electronic voting system with myself, vote, call, vote. Tonight's invocation will be led by Councilmember Robinson. Mr. Robinson?
Thank you very much. If you join me in prayer in whatever way is you're accustomed to. Father God, I just thank you for this wonderful day that you've made, this beautiful city that you give us the opportunity to live, work, and play in. I thank you very much for the public safety members in our community, those firefighters and police officers who are keeping us safe on a daily basis, even while we sleep, they're keeping watch, making sure that we're being protected, and I thank you for them. Thank you for the dedicated staff that we have at the city who, day in and day out, are trying to make sure that it remains the beautiful place that we all enjoy. And Lord, I just thank you for my colleagues, for their diligence, and it's been such a pleasure serving with them. I just ask that you just bless this evening, grant us wisdom and guidance as we seek to make Lake Forest a better place and make sure that the business of the city continues and that we do the people's business. Bless the rest of this evening and our time together in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Councilmember Robinson. Next is the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Councilmember Voits.
Ladies and gentlemen, if we could please stand and salute the greatest symbol of freedom in this world. I may, the colors that are shed upon us by this flag, may it bring peace to our land and hope for the world. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, un-
Thank you, Councilmember Voits. This is a closed session report. Mr. Attorney, are there any reportable items from closed session?
Yes, Madam Mayor, there's one item. The City Council has accepted an offer to settle a claim filed by Infinity Drywall Contracting for payment of a final change order submitted by that same company. That is all, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Next, we're moving on to presentations, which is item number three, a presentation from the Orange County Housing Finance Trust. Do I have a motion?
I'll move the item.
Do you consider approving the item?
Moved and seconded.
Please vote.
Mayor Motazidi, could you give me your vote verbally, please?
Aye.
Aye.
Let's say yes.
Motion passes, five zero.
Mayor Motazidi, we have a presentation for you tonight from the manager of the Orange County Housing Trust Fund. I'd like to invite Adam Elyson to come forward to the podium to provide the presentation. Do we know if Mr. Elyson was able to join us tonight?
He confirmed his attendance. We expected him. He might just be running a little bit late.
Okay, why don't we come back to this? So, let's move on.
Okay, do you want me to make my public comment statement, Madam City Manager, in the meantime? On this item?
Yes, at this time, we would go to public comment. So, yes, please.
Okay, okay. As the public may know, on March 4th, 2020, Governor Newsom proclaimed a state of emergency as a result of the threat of COVID-19. On March 17th, 2020, Governor Newsom issued Executive Order N. 2920, which allows a local legislative body to hold meetings via teleconferencing. The executive order also allows a legislative body to make public meetings electronically accessible to members of the public seeking to observe and address the legislative body. Pursuant to the executive order and given the current health concerns, the city is streaming this meeting live on its website at www.lakeforestca.gov. Additionally, the city has provided members of the public the opportunity to submit ecomments, which will be added to the record. At this time, members of the public may address the City Council regarding any items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. No action may be taken unless authorized by law, commended to three minutes per person and an overall time limit of 30 minutes for the public comment portion of the agenda. Any person wishing to address the council on any matter, whether or not it appears on this agenda, is requested to complete a request-to-speak form available at the door. The completed form is to be submitted to the city clerk prior to an individual being heard by the council. Madam Clerk, have we received any requests to speak this evening?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have. We've received one for public comment and two for consent calendar. The first one is Gary Ringer.
Good evening. I came here two weeks ago, understanding that the meeting that night was just formality, that each of you had already made up your minds in regards to the affordable housing project. I witnessed attempts by some of you to questions, or to ask questions that you thought were poignant and representative of District 5 residents. In reality, your questions were just a display of actions intended to let us know that you had thought of everything and you had addressed the concerns of the residents of the surrounding neighborhoods, who did not have any representation at that meeting. Your minds were already made up. I continued to watch the stream from home and in the parking lot on the electronic formats, and I enjoyed listening to one of you say that I've gone to that Denny's. I ask you, can you name any other business in that parking lot, or even name the name of the shopping center where Denny's is located? If your only answer is Omar's Bird Shop, or that barber shop, you should feel shame right now. I wonder if you can name any other business in the parking lot adjacent. I imagine right now, you're thinking, yeah, I know Sizzler, right? Feeling proud of yourself like you did when you answered that first daily double on Jeopardy. I ask again, can you name two more businesses on that block that don't rhyme with O Smiley's? If you can't do that, you don't represent District 5. You see, I live there. I've shopped there since 1998. I've eaten tacos at Taco's in Sonata, eaten barbecue at Texas Pit Barbecue, purchased baked goods at Efron's. I've even gone to O'Reilly's before, when it was in Craig and Auto Parts. By the way, you should check out Minato Sushi. Tell them Gary sent you. James will appreciate that. What I'm saying is I know more about this neighborhood than you. I tried to tell you what's happening in the neighborhood. You didn't listen. However, I do want to congratulate you. I do agree that affordable housing is a worthy cause, and I think that the neighborhood is going to benefit from having 71 units filled with people that have 1.35 parking lot or parking spots per unit. You see, you missed the point altogether. There's already a parking problem there. The people that live in that neighborhood right now, where that's going to be built, are parking in that lot at night. You gave a study from 2016 on a Tuesday night in the middle of November. The people that live there, they work at night. They do the jobs that you don't. I have a lot more to say, but I do want to say that I don't mind people moving into the neighborhood in affordable housing. It's a worthy cause. It really is. I would have probably voted yes on it, too. What I didn't like was the fact that you took wording and said, "If National Corps is responsible for a parking situation, that they will fund a review." The problem is that it's already a parking situation. As soon as the bulldozers move in, start working on that building, the people that park there at night are going to spill into the neighborhood next door, and you don't care about that. You didn't ask the right questions. It wasn't about the businesses. It was about the residents. Thank you.
Okay. We've received two speaker cards from Randy Johnson, one to speak on item four, one to speak on item five. He will be followed by Larissa Clark. Mr. Johnson?
Randy Johnson, longtime resident of-
Randy, can you hold on for just a second?
Sure.
I think we're one step ahead of the process here, and the mayor's in the skies. I want to make sure that we're, the process is right. So, we haven't gone to the consent calendar yet.
Mayor Motazidi, was it your intention to hear all the public comment at once, or did you just want general comment in the beginning, and then public comment for consent items with consent items?
I would like to hear all at once, but if that's an issue, then there could be a motion to change that.
No, we just wanted to make sure that's what you wanted, or I did. I wasn't aware of that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Randy Johnson, longtime resident of Lake Forest. Mr. Ringer gave an excellent presentation there. I mean, he nailed it, okay? And I feel the same way he does about this. I think that this is all cut and dried a long, long time ago, by the way. I think that National Corps actually purchased this property, you know, back in November 2019, both buildings, okay? So, it's kind of strange that they would expend $11.7 million to purchase this property, a full nine months before you decided to approve it. Could someone tell me how that works? I don't quite understand that. Why would a company front $11.7 million to buy a property before it's even rezoned or reviewed by the council for finalization? Can someone please answer that question for me? Maybe I'm mistaken, okay? If I am, please correct me. But these comments of mine are directed mainly towards Mr. Voits, Mr. Teddimer, Mr. Robinson. You're the three that actually voted to approve this. I want to thank Mr. James and the Mayor Motazidi, okay, for opposing this, but of course, it doesn't make any difference because whether it's a five-zero vote or a three-two vote, it still passes. Now, of course, you could care less about the people in District 5, the three of you. You threw them under the bus, okay? And you're tearing down a perfectly fine, structurally stable and solid business center that was at one time utilized by 30 small businesses, replacing it with a 71-unit, low-income, government-financed apartment complex that will house probably about 300 people. And you're putting it into a high-density neighborhood that's already rife with poverty, crime, congestion, and rundown, neglected, dilapidated apartment buildings. It's probably the worst place in the city you could actually put this. As far as, well, it's good for National Corps, of course, but it's terrible for the people who live around there. Can you imagine, this is going to take, what, a year or two to construct? They're going to have to bring in a wrecking ball to knock down that 32,000-square-foot business center. It's going to cause tremendous noise, tremendous havoc throughout the neighborhood. Where are the kids going to play in the neighborhood? Just like Mr. Ringer said, where are the people going to park? Right now, they're parking in the business center parking lot. So, there's going to be overspill now into the strip malls and down on Kavanaugh, over on Jute Wood. I mean, you're ruining the quality of life for people in that neighborhood, but you don't care because you don't live there. You would never do this. In a million years, you would never do this to your own neighborhoods, your upscale neighborhoods, but you don't mind doing it to the other people, do you? Okay? So, Mr. Robinson, you don't represent District 5, by the way, sir. I've sent you emails before on the district election, and you failed to respond. You don't care. You could care less about District 5. Look what you did with the general plan. You know, you put half of the 11,000 additional housing units right down in District 5, where you're going to put more low-income housing. And what are you going to do with that extra building that's there, by the way? On, I have two, six minutes, right? So, what are you going to do with the extra building at, what is it, 24591 El Toro Road? Are you going to eventually turn that into low-income housing as well? That was actually Concept B, if you recall, back in August of last year. That was the big plan. So, I want a commitment tonight, you're not going to turn that complex into low-income housing and put an extra 50 to 60 units in there. That would be disastrous for the community. So, if you could please address that. I haven't heard National Corps bring this up at all, okay, after it was addressed back in August of last year. Where are we with Complex B? Do they plan at any future time to turn that other building into low-income apartments? That's really an important question that I want answered. You know, also, as far as negotiations are concerned, one thing, you know, I don't understand is that when they plan to put 80 units, or 80 apartment units into the complex on Raymond Way, they're going to, the city is going to pay $3.7 million, but yet, it's only 71, so it's nine fewer, and they're still going to pay $3.7 million. So, we're getting less for our money here. I don't understand that. That comes out to be, on average, $5,863 less average per unit, or excuse me, more, and it would be a cumulative inflated cost of $416,273 for 71 units versus the 80. So, why are we paying the same amount of, who negotiated this? Why are we paying the same amount of money for 71 units as we were going to pay for 80? It's really an important question to ask. And also, this traffic study that they came up with, it makes no sense whatsoever. You're putting 300 people in these apartments. It's open 24/7, okay, round the clock. Have you ever been down to El Toro Road on a Saturday afternoon and seen the volume of traffic down there? Did they take that in consideration? Those businesses are closed, for the most part, on Saturday. There's nobody going into those businesses, okay? So, how could this traffic study say that there would be actually less traffic with the apartment building than there would be for the business center? Makes no sense at all. I was in the business center last Friday, in fact. There were only six doors that were open there. It was closed, only six. And I did some research, and I called these different businesses. I could only ascertain that there were seven businesses still located on Raymond. The others were chased away because they were told they were going to demolish the building. So, could you look into that for us, please, and maybe ask the National Corps representative to explain these things? Thank you.
Next speaker is Larissa Clark, followed by Matt Panic.
Are we doing all the public speaking, not for the item number?
This completes all the speaker cards I've received? Yes.
Okay, so, so we're going, we're just lumping all the items into one public session here?
That was the mayor's desire for this evening, yes.
Just real quick, before she, did she say she was also going to speak on Agenda Item Eight? Okay, that's not a part of the consent calendar. That's one of the public hearings, so I don't think we can take that out of order. Maybe the city attorney can-
Yeah, I concur with that. I, the way, the way we're doing this is kind of hog-bogged. Just to let you know.
Yes, council members. So, the Brown Act requires that the public be given an opportunity to speak prior to deliberations on the items. That can take place at any point prior to those items. You are correct that, that Item Eight is a public hearing, so that comment actually, as part of that hearing, should, should take place during, during the actual hearing, after it's gavelled. Everything else can, can take place right now. So, if we could just pause on Ms. Clark's comments until Agenda Item Eight, then we can take those at that time.
I'll give it a go.
I cannot hear Ms. Clark. Okay.
Hi, Nikki, can you hear me now? Okay, Larissa Clark-
Yes, thank you.
Larissa Clark, resident of Lake Forest for 22 years. I live in District 5, and I'm current council candidate for District 5. And I would like to give support or throw my name behind the requests of the other two speakers, Mr. Ringer and Mr. Johnson. The parking, it's a mess. This project that you, the three out of the five approved, is going to be a mess. Are you going to look at the other apartments in the area? Are you going to look at the surrounding neighborhoods? How do you plan to communicate the construction to the surrounding areas, the surrounding businesses? How do you plan to communicate the inundating phone calls that you will probably get to the city? Because most people probably are not aware that this is happening. As soon as they see these construction trucks rolling down and all the, the action happening, then you'll see a rise on public, you know, social media and other things, like, what's happening? What's this? What's that? We should fight this. And we all know, at that time, it is too late to fight it. So, I, I really hope that even though you threw District 5 under the bus, Robinson, Teddimer, and Voits, that maybe you could rectify that. Well, Robinson, you'll be gone in November, but maybe you could rectify that by reaching out to the residents of District 5, the apartment complexes, the homeowners, and the business owners around that area. Because I just drove down that post office, and that cul-de-sac went all around there, through the apartments, the condos, the back parking lot, everything. And the building that they plan to tear down, that back parking lot right now, has a little homeless encampment. I saw drug paraphernalia right in the back very corner. I saw clothing. I saw trash. I saw bucket, which I don't know for a fact, but buckets are usually used as a restroom for homeless people. So, please take this into consideration and consider us in District 5, because we're the district that is impacted the most by this project. And yes, National Corps, they put out a beautiful, lovely thing, but will we actually get that? Because their point, or their main job as consultants, is to get the project. That's it. They'll tell you everything you want to hear. They'll do research. They use old data, old research, new data, projections. I know this because I work for a large architecture engineering firm, and I write proposals. So, please keep that in the back of your mind. This is nothing against National Corps. I'm sure they're a lovely nonprofit, and they do a lot of good. And I don't want the homeless or the people that need the services to not have them, yet one of the main people that can use this National Corps are non-legal status. So, Voits, Teddimer, and Robinson, you voted to help non-legal status residents over our own. Shame on you.
Who's the next speaker, may I ask?
Matt Panic.
We're doing, I, I need to respond, so if I could have a minute, please. Randy, Larissa, this National Corps project, low-income housing, is something that is not in any plans of the cities of Orange County or California, is being forced upon us by the state of California. So, the fact that this would have been there with more, more housing that's even proposed now, because they would have had jurisdiction, we would have taken local control away from us and put what they wanted. So, is Gail, Gail, do we have, could Gail come up and speak just on this, since we're out of order, and this is item number? Okay, well, we're talking on the subject now, so I mean, we've taken everything out of order. I would just like to say that, you know, this is, this is what, public speaking, this is what they wanted to hear, so that's why you don't do it out of order.
Madam Mayor, did you want to take the last?
You know what, there's a different style. Everyone has a different style, Councilmember Voits. I understand your concern.
Okay, could Gail come up and just answer the question?
We have one more speaker. Let's just have one more speaker finish, and then we can move on.
Okay, the last speaker is Matt Panic.
Hello, everyone.
Good evening.
Mayor, council, city members, staff, I appreciate you all so much. I wanted to turn this into a little bit more of a positive conversation. Wanted to talk a tiny bit in support of the CIP project, Item 10, at the Arbers. We have presented a proposal to the city, and I just wanted to very quickly talk about our, our proposal and what we envisioned for the Arbers going forward. Our business, I'm the owner of Brew Grill and Market at the corner of El Toro and Rockfield. We've been there almost 10 years now, proud supporter of the city, done everything we could possibly do for schools and the community and organizations, and tried to help in every possible way we could. It's been an honor and a support, or an honor to support and serve this city for the last 10 years. We, we are so thankful. Over the last 10 years, we've watched the journey of the Arbers. And the Arbers kind of started out as, as something pretty wonderful. And my kids used to run up there and play when I was working in the restaurant, and over the years, that turned to a different scenario. About three years ago, we had a woman walk into our front door and told us that there was a man bleeding up in the park. And I ran up there with the manager, held his head together. Long story short, the gentleman was stabbed and died 24 hours later at Saddleback Hospital. And ever since then, the park went completely a different direction, and it spilled over into our business. And every morning, we would try to get into the business and clean up our patio, because it was, it just became a, quite a problem. So, about six, seven, eight months ago, we really started strategizing on how we could possibly help once the city had enclosed, and that actually helped us, so I appreciate that. But we propose something now to actually lease the property from the city, to turn it into what we think could be a really magical setting with string lights and outdoor dining and, and community events that we would free sponsor for city residents throughout the year. So, a lot of really positive things. The money would come back into the city instead of money going out of the city. We would take over the maintenance of the park. Just a lot of really, really positive things. But I know you're voting tonight on CIP money into that on both sides of the Arbers, and I just wanted to tell you how much we support it and how much we want to try to do something good on that corner and, and help out this city that we're so proud of. Thank you.
Matt, we want, we want to thank you for choosing Lake Forest to establish the Brew Inn, because of all the restaurants in South Orange County, you're probably my favorite. I'm biased to Lake Forest restaurants, and so we value you and our city, and I think that would be a beautiful addition to the city, having you have outside venue there. So, thank you.
Thank you. Now, we have public comment. I'm going to flip back over to item number three, our presentations, because presenter I hear is, is in the building. So, we're going to move over to item three, Housing Finance Trust.
Mr. Ellison, could you come forward, please?
Hi, good evening. My name is Adam Elyson. I'm the manager of the Orange County Housing Finance Trust, and thank you for the opportunity to come to you again and give you a brief presentation, an update presentation, since I was here last in February. And it was at that time that the city of Lake Forest agreed to join the Orange County Housing Finance Trust. And one of the things that you requested of staff and myself was to come back in six months and give you an update on how we're doing and what accomplishments have been achieved. So, that's exactly what I wanted to do tonight. If we can get the next slide, or the slide. Great, just one more slide. So, the Orange County Housing Finance Trust is a regional collaborative of 23 cities and the County of Orange, representing over 80% of the population of Orange County. Over the next five years, it's anticipated that the trust will provide $50 million in gap funding for the development of affordable and supportive housing, with six- with 16 to 17 million available to developers and cities located within the southern portion of Orange County. Much of this funding is brand-new money coming into the trust and securing, by securing funding from state and federal sources. And our goal is to try to ensure that Orange County gets its fair share of funding for affordable and supportive housing. It's been a long time since Orange County has advocated strongly in the state and federal government to bring that fair share of money. We've, we've sent certainly a lot of taxpayer dollars into Sacramento and the federal government. And the trust's goal is to bring some of that money back into the region to address some of the housing crisis issues that we're facing. Next slide. Oh, sorry, back one. So California is home to all of us and it really has two dichotomous worlds. One is high-income and expensive homes and the other is low-income and expensive rents. So overcoming that is a daunting task. We've got overcrowding that's occurring in homes behind closed doors. We have lower-income households commuting long distances to afford housing. And if we can just go back, if you get a chance, got some statistics on the slide. If you use your left arrow key, you might just get it to go, left arrow. There you go, one more time. There you go, got it. So the trust focuses on adding thousands of new, high-quality, affordable and supportive housings to the region. This housing is indistinguishable from other market-rate rental housing and gives an opportunity to advance households to the next level. It provides your children, nurses, inspectors, construction laborers, and many other entry-level jobs, the opportunity to save money and hopefully stay in the area and eventually move into market-rate housing and eventually even into ownership. Next slide. So I'm here to report on the accomplishments and that's what this slide does. In our first year since we were established, we've gone through a variety of items just to get the formation set up. We've elected our officers. I'm proud to say that our chairman is located in Laguna Niguel. He's a council member, John Mark Jennings. We have other board members located in Dana Point and Mission Viejo. So South County is well-represented on our board. We have other board members representing the county and other cities in the county. We approved our final bylaws. We created a website and everyone's welcome to go on there. I'll have it at the last slide showing what that website is. And on that website, one of the interesting things we get a lot of positive feedback on is a project mapping slide or page. And what it shows is all of the affordable and supportive housing projects located in the county. And we have a goal that we've adopted at the trust that is the same goal as the county. And that is to create 2,700 new supportive housing units within the next five years. And that slide shows the media, the residents of any community, developers, where some of that housing is being located. And it shows the project, the address, how many units there are, and what the status of the project is. And by doing that, we just felt that it was really important to be very transparent on how we're progressing towards that goal. And it just has a lot of interesting information. Item four is just we adopted our first fiscal year trust budget. And item five is we approved a five-year strategic plan that was just adopted by the trust board a couple of months ago. And number six is interesting of note to Lake Forest. Earlier this year, in January, February, we released a notice of funding. And through a process of application, many projects applied for that funding. In fact, we had about 22 projects apply for funding. And in May of this year, our trust board approved seven projects and over $10 million of funding and creating 467 affordable and supportive housing units throughout the county. One of those projects of significance is the project in Lake Forest. And that's the Mountain View Apartment Projects, 71 units. And that project from the trust received funding of $1.21 million. The last item is our fiscal 2020, 2021. We anticipate in the first quarter of next year that we will have another round of $10 million in funding that will be available for Orange County developers to help support them in their affordable and supportive housing. And lastly, just some of our significant efforts that we're making up in Sacramento right now, talking to legislators. We have a really broad support, unanimous support for Orange County to bring those new dollars in, into Orange County. Unfortunately, Sacramento's in a state of financial crisis themselves. And so we're working with them and as additional federal sources come in, we have a letter of funding request that's into the legislators to be able to bring additional funding in. It's just a matter of trying to make sure we can carve out some money, given the circumstances we're facing. And the next slide. So the trust collectively or collaboratively tackles this affordable housing and supportive housing crisis. And what's important to the legislators is, and what we hear over and over from them, and we've had meetings in Sacramento a lot, and that is that there's a united support, there's political will in Orange County to solve a regional problem. And that is this affordable and supportive housing issue. And although we oftentimes look at Orange County in this way, which is all the different cities that make up Orange County, my goal is to be able to talk to legislators and others to be able to bring funding in Orange County at what they really like, and if we can go to the next slide, is they like, they like to hear that our story is that we have a regional collaborative effort that is coming to Sacramento and other federal sources to seek out bringing that funding back into Orange County. Instead of 34 cities trying to ask for money or different special projects, we have a collective voice and we have a strong voice that is going up in making sure that we can get that funding and bring that into the region. Last slide. So in conclusion, I just appreciate the opportunity to give you this update. I'm available to answer any questions. And this is my contact information and the website is listed there right in the middle.
Mr. Ellison, I'm sorry if I'm pronouncing that incorrectly. Thank you so much for coming to our meeting and your presentation. I'm the mayor from the sky currently as we speak. I do have a question and this is in no regard, sort of a comment on you or the trust. You, I don't know how early you got, you heard some of our residents frustrated, you know, low-income housing and supportive housing is essentially being mandated from Sacramento and to our beloved, you know, Orange County. And although it is a righteous cause to help those in need, the problem is, and these are the legislative holes that unfortunately, you know, us at the local level can't do anything about, but we cannot guarantee that actual legal residents receive these benefits. So essentially taxpayers are subsidizing and continue to subsidize in the state of California, other countries, people from other countries. And so that's where the, I think there's a point of contention. There's also this push from Sacramento to completely change the makeup of a lot of cities in order to bring a certain type of voters into the community. So it's frustrating because it's developed into a very political issue permanent alien residents and US citizens. And it's unfortunate that we have a system that allows us to essentially take in anyone. And like I said, this is a righteous cause and we support a safety net. I do support a safety net for those that are in need. But I mean, if we were supposed to fix every housing problem or price problem, I mean, we'd be housing countries all across the world, you know, and can we do that? So this is not a reflection on you and on the housing trust. I do think you guys are doing a great job, but it's just a general comment and a perspective from a lot of our constituents.
Yeah. And I hear those comments and I would just add that when it comes to the trust, we are, we have in our bylaws that we support projects that are not just for the homeless, but for affordable housing, households that are not homeless. We have a, we certainly have a mission to help address the homeless issue. The projects that we're assisting, actually the funding that we're assisting, are reaching the lowest income category, which are the 30% of area median income and below. And it is the most expensive category for your regional housing needs assessment numbers that the state is mandating upon you. And to the extent that we can help meet some of your obligations for that regional housing needs assessment numbers, that's what the trust is doing and providing. That's what this new money that we're bringing into the county is achieving in other areas. And I'll just add one more thing. I, you know, I can't solve some of the issues that you brought up, but I will say this, that in our last point-in-time count in the county, the point-in-time count determines what our homeless population is in Orange County. We were almost at 7,000 homeless population in the last point-in-time count. And in contrast, in LA, that number is close to 60,000. And we all have seen perhaps, or have witnessed what that looks like. And I like to characterize that in Orange County, 7,000 is a number that I can wrap my arms around and other stakeholders that I sit at tables with to discuss this homeless issue and where we are with them, talking about solutions and how we can address this issue. It's something that we can see a solution perhaps in the near future. It came after quite a while and it won't go away right away, but we can in Orange County ensure that it doesn't get worse and it doesn't grow into an issue that looks like perhaps other areas in the state that are out of control. And so the effort of the trust and all the other stakeholders that I sit with that on a regular basis just to talk about this, including support services and service providers and the county staff, from the healthcare agency to developers who are all trying to solve this and look to ways that we can control and manage this. The thing I can just say is that we're optimistic and again, my chief goal is to grab as much money to address this issue before it gets out of control.
Mayor Motazidi, I have a question, please.
Go right ahead, Mr. Voits.
Yeah, Adam, thanks for coming tonight. But this was a discussion on the Housing Finance Trust. And I thought it was for low-income housing. I didn't, wasn't aware that it was for homeless. Low-income housing is different than a homeless shelter. So I'm wondering, do you dabble in both arenas?
So we don't do, we're not allowed in our bylaws to do any homeless shelter at all.
You mentioned homeless shelters in your statement. So just to clarify that, you're a low-income housing financier.
Yeah, I'll clarify, meaning if I said shelter, I...
You didn't say shelter, but you said house the homeless. And so I get where you're going now. I'm going to continue with my questions. And so my question to you is, I think Mayor Motazidi was talking about, you know, documentation and the residency of where your people that are going to come live in the low-income housing. So I think that we as local elected officials, we know that there's a lot of struggling people in Saddleback Valley. And how do we know that they have dibs on this low-income housing? If they're struggling in Lake Forest or Mission Viejo or Santa Margarita, do they have the ability to get into the housing that we're providing at Mountain View on El Toro Road? It's just something that, you know, we want to help our own, even though we know there's people struggling all over. But there are struggling people that are struggling to keep shelter above their families. So how do we know that you're utilizing everything, every asset you can to make sure that local residents and local struggling families can have an opportunity at the low-income housing that you were doing?
Yeah. That's more of a question for the developer and the property manager than, I'm a financing source. I don't get into underwriting qualifying buyers or renters or tenants.
Okay, but I think that was a question Mayor Motazidi was saying, but just talking a little bit more broad. And so I'm just bringing it and narrowing it down that we kind of want to, we want to make sure that we help our own. As someone that finances this, state law is going in the direction that with arena numbers, are we in danger if we're not moving forward with any low-income housing? Does the state have the ability to come in and mandate that farther?
Again, I'm not a arena expert, so I'm not, you know, here to answer that question.
I'll say that for the next, for the item number, but I have nothing further than that, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
So wait, hold on then. What do you actually do then, besides resourcing money towards low-income housing?
Right, so we're a financing source to help the development of affordable and supportive housing.
And who's the pool of money coming from?
State, state sources that come in, county sources.
City sources? Cities also?
We don't require that. That's not, that's not part of our funding source. But if they come into a project, then that's just one more. Many of these projects have six, seven, eight layers of financing that come in, gap funding. We become one of those significant gap funding sources.
All right, well, thank you so much.
Okay.
Mayor Motazidi, I just have one quick question. I've asked this question a number of times, not necessarily from you, but from quite a few others. So I'm trying to understand why low-income housing is so expensive. And being that you're a part of the financing part to it, I'm hoping that you can at least give me a little bit better understanding than I have right now because it seems like two-bedroom apartments in Orange County seem to be in the $500,000 range, which seems astronomical when you can build a five-bedroom house in Corona and they can be for sale on the fours. So I'm kind of confused why it's so expensive. Are there regulatory issues? You know, what are some of the challenges? They have to do with the covenants? Is there some rent recovery over that, you know, covenant period, things like that? If you can just elaborate for me on all of that.
Sure, I'll give you a couple. And again, that might be a good question for the developer who's going through the pro forma and giving you the numbers. What I've heard and what I've seen, there are a couple areas. One is prevailing wage requirements. What I'm hearing is sometimes that increases the cost of the project as much as 25, 30% even. The other factor that we see in many of these projects is the various supportive services that come in to help the tenants who are there in the housing. These, this housing, some of the tenants, many of them, half of them in some cases, have this wraparound service that provides them with job skill training, life skill training, addiction recovery training, mental health services, counseling, you name it, whatever many of these tenants need, they are providing those types of services. These projects are indistinguishable from market-rate housing, so they are being built to a high-quality standard to ensure that the community isn't seeing deterioration in values in the neighborhood. So other than that, maybe there's other factors that come in. Those are the ones that come to my mind right now.
Well, I appreciate the comments. I think that as you're doing due diligence, trying to figure out whether you're going to fund something, you need to understand the economics to a certain extent. I get the fact that you don't understand every single aspect of it. But is there anything the housing trust is doing on the regulatory side? Because your goal is to build more affordable housing, right?
Yeah.
And so if certain regulations such as prevailing wage or PLAs or things like that are driving up the cost dramatically, you're having to try to find more scarce resources and basically not able to get as much as you'd like, as you said, the state's, you know, going through some fiscal challenges right now, to say the least. And yet also the cost, just on that one aspect you said, might be 25 to 30% higher.
Yeah.
Meaning if you got the same amount of dollars, you could build 25 to 30% more if you didn't have that requirement in place. So is there anything you're doing from a regulatory perspective or is it just purely financial?
Well, there's certainly discussions that are happening, always asking the question about the costs and what can be done. And I think one of the things that the trust brings is that regional approach. And there are other trusts in California that are large in nature. And to the extent that it's appropriate, it's within our bylaws that we can support that. We've talked about being able to collaborate with other trusts in the state of California to be able to examine and look at what we can do to help make the cost of affordable housing more affordable, frankly.
I appreciate that and would encourage that. And if I can be a part... And if I can be a part of trying to help build that coalition, I'd be very supportive of that. I, I think that it's, it's got to be one of the big challenges, just the skyrocketing cost. I get the wraparound services, you know, there's a cost for those services and you want those residents to have the things in place that are going to help them be able to be successful, right? Hopefully make their way out of affordable housing into market rate housing. And if they don't have those services, they may be even more hamstrung to be able to make it out. But, you know, some of the other things that we've done to protect certain special interests in Sacramento that drive up the cost of housing and are actually impeding our ability to provide more affordable housing for those that need it the most is just ridiculous in my mind. And, you know, anything that I can do, again, to try to help find an exemption for you and other trusts like you, more than happy to do.
Great, I'll certainly keep that in mind. Thank you, Councilman.
All right, any more comments? Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Ellison, for your, your presentation, really appreciate it. All right, that finally moves us over to the consent calendar, items four through seven. All matters listed under the consent calendars are considered routine and will be enacted by one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the city council or staff request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Have there been any requests to remove an item from the consent calendar?
Mayor, I have not received any requests to remove any items.
I'd like to pull.
Okay, thank you, this.
I'd like to make a statement on the consent calendar, but I'd like to pull item number four, please. Thank you.
Okay, so we do have some public statements to make for the record regarding the warrant register. I will let Councilmember Teddermer go first.
Thank you, Mayor. There are warrants on the register to Irvine Ranch Water District. I'm an employee of Irvine Ranch Water District, but I do not work for the department that generated the warrants. Because the Irvine Ranch Water District is a public agency and because I do not work for the department in question, I have determined that I have a non-interest in the warrants and will vote on those matters. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Voits.
There are warrants on the register from the County of Orange. I am an employee with the County of Orange, but I do not work in the departments that generate the warrants. Because the County of Orange is a public agency and because I do not work for the departments in question, I have determined that I have a non-interest in these warrants and I will vote on the items. Thank you.
Thank you, all right. My turn. There are warrants on the register to the gas company. I'm an employee of the gas company and have determined that I have a remote interest in the warrants and will abstain from voting on the warrants. All right, it looks like I have a motion to consider approving recommended items except for item number four. So we'll be approving items five through seven and leaving four for discussion. Do I have a second?
Yes, you got a second, I'll second that. Who made the first?
I think it was your motion, I can second it.
Okay, I'll make the motion except the remainder. Move the remainder.
Okay, I can second that.
Okay, and Mayor Motazidi.
Madam Clerk, do you want my vote?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, I has my vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, all right. Item number four on the consent is regarding the relocation plan for the Mountain View Affordable Housing Community located at 24551 Raymond Way. Councilmember Voits, go right ahead.
As we even get tonight, the public comments, there's a lot of discussions still going on, on what the Mountain View Affordable Housing Community will be. It's going to be seventy-one units. I know of four other cities in the County of Orange and toured all four of the locations that I know of that were built by National Corps. And National Corps just doesn't build them, but they manage them, so they don't let them out of their portfolio. And I just wanted to say that there's some misnomers that we as council members have a due diligence to represent the whole city, not just District Three. I'm representing of District Five also. Whether you vote for me, you have voted for me, so I am a representative for the whole city. And the fact is that this is not something that any of us foresaw eight years ago when we were doing the, the capital improvement programs that we were having in the city or we did the opportunity study. The, the housing shortage, according to what the state's mandating upon us, has gone astronomical. So I, I'd like to bring up our community director, Gail Ackerman. Ask her some questions on, on low-income housing and RENA numbers, please. Is she here?
Good evening.
I, I know you have a lot of institutional knowledge, but ten years ago, could you imagine how much low-income housing they're forcing upon our city at this time?
Well, we do get an allocation every eight years, so the city has a housing element.
So, so ten years ago, we didn't have this amount of low-income housing required?
Our, our RENA number has changed significantly. We've had three different housing elements since the city's incorporation. At one time, the number was twenty-seven. Our last number that covers the period two thousand and thirteen to two thousand and twenty-one is two thousand seven hundred and twenty-seven.
So, so ten years ago, it was twenty-seven?
One of our cycles was twenty-seven.
Wow, and what is our number this year?
Well, it's an eight-year period, so it runs until two thousand and twenty-one, and our current RENA is two thousand seven hundred and twenty-seven. We're getting ready to start a new housing element cycle, which will cover the years two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and thirty, and the RENA number is just draft at this time. I believe it's just over three thousand three hundred.
Three thousand three hundred, that'll be our next number, you think?
Yes.
Then that's something that's been worked out with the California League of Cities and, and, and the state, kind of as they go through this, yeah. I'm the representative for the state of Califor, for the city of Lake Forest with the League of Cities, and I, I've been involved in this trying to fight for equity. In some areas, they tried to shove low-income housing in higher quantities, and I think we as the city of Lake Forest have, have fought that trend here in Lake Forest. So twenty-seven, and then we're at two thousand, repeat that number again, right now?
Two thousand seven hundred and twenty-seven is the number that was given to the city by the state for that eight-year period.
And then, and coming up in two thousand twenty-one, what's that number?
Three thousand two hundred and twenty-eight.
Three thousand?
Two hundred and twenty-eight.
And, and what, does this come in different categories of housing? Do we have a higher percentage or numbers if we do super low, or do we, do we get all the same?
No, the, the state will give us the categories, very low, low, moderate, and above moderate. So we'll be assigned a number. So of that twenty-seven, twenty-seven, for example, the split was for very low, six hundred and forty-seven, low, four hundred and fifty, moderate, four hundred and ninety-seven, and then above moderate, which is any market rate housing, eleven hundred and thirty-three.
Do we, do we have a current count of how much low-income housing we have in the city?
We're required to report to the state every year. We do our annual housing compliance report. And so of the roughly sixteen hundred affordable units that they were looking for in that eight-year period, and we're six years into the eight-year period, the market has produced two hundred and sixty-two affordable units.
So this has been a resistance to a lot of cities on, on producing and allowing low-income housing, has it not? It's been a struggle to try to get the cities to move forward with, correct?
Well, the city's role in this is to ensure that land is appropriately zoned. The cities are not building housing.
No, so, so it's like the zone that allows it.
Right, and so we show, we demonstrate to the state every eight years when we have our housing element approved, that we do indeed have land at sufficient density for the markets to come in and build those units, but sometimes the market does not actually construct those units.
Of, of the two thousand seven hundred and twenty-seven that we're supposed to have, that have been allocated to us, what allows us not to have that quantity right now? Is it just a good faith effort that we're, have zoning that allows it?
Yes, that, that, that is the role of the city to ensure that, that we have that land appropriately zoned. And so we demonstrate that in our housing element.
So, so what, what has been some of the threats that the state, just for some of the listeners and some of those that have been criticizing us, what does the state threaten to do if we don't move forward in, in making zoning available for this?
I think I'd let the city attorney take that question.
I, I just, I've told people this and they don't believe me, so I, I want them to hear it from the city attorney. Thank you, Gail.
Yes, Council, the, the biggest threat the state has against a city that is not compliant with its RENA is to not certify its housing element or decertify the housing element. If that happens and the city potentially doesn't have the ability to approve any development projects, that includes CUPs, SDPs, essentially any application that would come into the planning commission could not be approved by the city until our housing element is, is recertified. This has happened before to cities. It's rare, but it can happen. That's, that's the biggest stick they have.
So the city, it can lose its local control and the state could come in?
Yes, essentially the city loses its, its ability to approve projects.
If we don't approve projects.
That's correct.
So, so I, I think that we all struggle with trying to keep the quality of life where we are in, in Lake Forest, in the County of Orange. But the fact is that the state and League of Cities and local government has stated, and I don't know where they got their numbers from, but say we have a housing crisis and that people aren't able to afford housing in Orange County in California. That's where these RENA numbers have come forward. And as much as I don't like them, it's being mandated by the stupid state of California. So I think that the seventy-one units that we just allowed on El Toro Road was a step in the right direction. And I think that the product that National Corps produces and runs are, are well-run, and I, I've seen it with my own eyes. And they actually have agreed to allow the Boys and Girls Club of Lake Forest to utilize their community room to help with the area's children. So I, I have nothing else to say, except that, you know, I think that we live in a crazy time and a crazy state, and I think that we're being kind of forced down this road. I have nothing further.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Voits. So I think we're going to just go ahead and move to, vote to move that item, item number four.
Mayor.
Do I have a motion?
Oh, sorry, Mayor.
Oh, yes, go ahead.
Since we're going to take this opportunity, I thought I would just respond to some of the comments made by the speakers earlier, since we're, I was going to save it for the end, but since we're sort of in that mode. I know not everyone clearly agrees with the decision made, and I understand that. As it relates to the District Five issue, you know, for twenty-five-plus years, decisions were made by the entire group, for the entire city. And I voted on things in, we now know are other districts. I supported the Alton Project, that's not in the district I represent. I supported the improvements to El Toro Road, that's not in the district I represent. And so I have never supported the district process, but it's here. It's not something I support. I still look at everything what I think is right for the community in total. And I would submit to you that no one person, me or anybody up here, can do anything. It's always going to take support from others. So I still, my personal view is I look at the city as a whole, and I don't support districts. I would note also that the general plan amendments that the council just approved essentially was a version of the same conversation. The fact that we would take areas that we think can use some enhancement and reimagine them in a different way with an inducement to try and get people to say, I'm willing to come in and invest in your community. And sometimes we have to induce that, and that's what the whole general plan amendment process was about, when we said we're going to look at five areas in the city and saying, what else might it be? Because we recognize sometimes investment doesn't happen on its own, and sometimes places might need help. And that's the lens in which I looked at this process and that project, is that I see an area that could use some help. And my analogy would be that if I lived on a street and there were, all the homes needed help, and somebody came in and said, I'm willing to buy in there and make it better, most people would say thank you and encourage it and hope that it is a catalyst for positive change. And that's what I see as being the potential outcome here. Let's see, a couple of thoughts. A comment was made about where are the kids going to play, because the presumption is that they are playing in the parking lot of the business building. I think, I think I'm going to be hopeful that National Corps will open their doors not only to the kids that are there, but the kids in the neighborhood. So where will they play? They'll play and have wonderful opportunities to be enriched by going to that community center in there, in lieu of playing in a parking lot, which somebody else said tonight was full of drugs and all sorts of other problems. So this sounds like an upgrade to me, maybe I'm missing something, but if I'm hearing people concerned about homelessness and drug paraphernalia in the parking lot, and somebody says, I'm going to come and improve the place and give a kid, a place for kids to play and be enriched through programs, it could be whether it's Boys and Girls Club or Families Forward or whoever, whoever it is. I see that as a positive attribute for this. I should also go on record as saying, I have received not one dollar from National Corps. That claim has been made and it is false. I have not received a dollar from National Corps. I didn't learn about National Corps until they were, that was a selection by the prior council to contract with them to see if it was affordable housing project that might be possible in Lake Forest. I didn't select them, that was already there. But when I spent time to go find out who they were, because I didn't know them, and I went to go tour the projects and I was impressed, and I would submit to you that the people who went on the tour that I suggested people go on, I would say, I don't know what the pre-imposed situation was, but I certainly will tell you, there were a lot of people that were favorably impressed when they saw not only the product that they produce, but that years later it still holds up and is well-managed. And that impresses me, and that's my job, is to make those determinations about what I think represents an asset and a positive attribute. The comment was made earlier about they purchased the property early and therefore the cake was baked. I talked to them about that. They said if it doesn't pass, we'll sell the property. So, but they also have to take advantage of opportunities when they present themselves. They looked at many properties throughout Lake Forest, and it takes not only enough space, but it takes a willing seller, and that's what the criteria was, among other things. Comment about the three-point-seven million dollars, correct me, is that, that's a loan? That's a loan that the, where the city has put forth and will be repaid over time? That's correct? Okay, thank you. There's several businesses that are left. Somebody said there are seven businesses are left. I don't know the exact number, maybe that's correct. I know that, that part of what's being discussed tonight is the plan to provide for them, which could include moving a matter of hundreds of feet over to another building right there. I don't know that, that's for National Corps and those business people to decide. I talked to the city manager at the very end of the meeting where we made this vote, and I encouraged her to reach out to National Corps to start a conversation with the community down there. And I trust that will happen, and we will find ways to engage with the community so they know what's coming. It's not a secret, nobody's hiding it, but I also think that there are some attributes here that need to be made clear about what, what could be coming. And then, and again, the comments about drug and homelessness in the parking lot. Well, then what's the catalyst for change? I say this could be that catalyst for change, and that's why I voted yes. Otherwise, we're going to consign these people to live the way they live with no change. And does that seem very hopeful or optimistic? I don't believe it is. And so if I see an opportunity to enhance our community, then I, I voted for, for those reasons. The concern about the legal status or non-legal status of those, I understand that concern, but I also am reminded of the comment that perfection is the enemy of the good. And to suggest that everyone is going to be in there has some status which is unacceptable to them are facts that are not in evidence. And even if there's one in there, what do you say to all the others that are, have proper legal status? We're going to say the whole thing gets thrown overboard because there may be one or a few. That's the concern I have about this idea that perfection is the enemy of the good. I'm willing to bank on the good and believe in that it'll make that community a whole lot better when all is said and done. Thank you.
I just have one quick question about communication, so that was brought up as well. What communication will there be with area residents? We talked a little bit about this, about signage with dust control, noise control, things like that at the last meeting, but if you could just address how residents in that immediate area, or maybe even adjacent business owners, will be communicated to about different aspects of the demolition and construction and what signage? construction, and what signage will be available for people to reach out to, the various agencies that would be responsible for making sure that the area is maintained the way it's supposed to be during construction and deconstruction. Thanks.
Sure. So as Councilmember Teddermer mentioned, we as a staff have already started meeting to put together a plan to outreach to those neighborhoods. And we're looking at it as three separate neighborhoods. The fourplexes and sixplexes would be one area. The Gootwood Housing Area would be another area, and then the housing area across the way would be another area. And we would start that communication now to kind of hear more about what, some of the comments that were made here, but also just engage with the neighborhood to find out what are their concerns, what are the concerns about this project, but more broadly, what are their concerns about their neighborhood, and what can we do as a city to start to address those concerns. Beyond that, once we get into the construction phase, we will be putting a robust list together of email addresses so we can reach out to people. We will encourage some to subscribe to Nixle so we can put out specific reports of a little more information on a more timely basis on what's going on with construction. The site itself will have signage that identifies the site manager. So if there are issues with dust or noise, there's a phone number available, as well as phone numbers for the agencies like AQMD that monitor dust and so forth. There's always also the opportunity to contact the city in our building counter if someone sees something that they don't believe is correct. And our onsite project managers would go out and inspect and take corrective action if necessary. So residents always will have someone here at City Hall that they can call. We do have a live person answer the phone during office hours. And beyond that, we will be communicating through social media, Nixle, as well as email.
Thank you very much. I think that any type of signage on the project fencing itself, giving that information is extremely helpful to people. Trying to track down phone numbers through a website or through social media, something like that, might be a little bit of a challenge for some. And so anything we can do to encourage that communication, the better. And then just, you know, briefly, it talks about, you know, we're only putting this in certain areas and not in others. We talked about the fact that, you know, there's probably more affordable housing in the district that I live in than there is in any other part of the city, and that's District Two, which is represented by Mayor Motazidi, but that's where we have a significant affordable housing complex in Baker Ranch. And so it's, we all have affordable housing in every single district, and it's just not zoned that way. So my direct neighbor at one point was renting the house out. There were six different adults with six cars in a three-bedroom home. So, you know, it's, I know exactly what people are concerned about, but it exists. In District Five, just two, three years ago, there was a fire behind the old Payless Shoe Store on that cul-de-sac, and there were more than 10 children living in a single home with more than 10 adults in a four-bedroom home. Now, there's no onsite manager to make sure that that doesn't happen. And when we talked about that here at City Hall, we were all flabbergasted that that many people could live in a single-family home, but the state of California allows it. There's nothing that we could do about it. So it exists in every district, in lots of neighborhoods. There's lots of people living in homes. And if we don't find a way, my preference would be through general market forces to provide what's needed out there, then we're going to see this problem exacerbate itself throughout the community because it's incredibly expensive to live. And we are looking at what constitutes affordable housing. I think the number was $71,000 annual income for a four-person family. That could encompass a lot of people in this community. In fact, a few public commentators came to the mic and said that, that a vast majority of the community probably falls under qualifications for affordable housing. Why? Well, because they moved into town 30 years ago, when housing was much less expensive, and they don't make six-figure salaries. Right? A lot of people in this community who are on fixed incomes who would qualify for this. So, you know, I understand everyone's concerns, but, you know, I really believe that we made the right decision for the community. We made the right decision for that particular area. I think that it's going to enhance the area. I understand the apprehensions with any type of change, but I think that we'll all look back on this in just a few years and say, this was the right decision for this neighborhood. And I really hope that someone starts to look at those fourplexes and sixplexes and looks at investing in that and trying to change that. Because right now, it is a mess. Everybody knows that. But, you know, it's not the property owner with that office building right now. It's not their responsibility to provide parking. People are invading on their private property right now. So there wasn't adequate parking when those developments were approved years before we were even a city. So unfortunately, at the time, the county didn't really care about what was going on in that particular area. And maybe they didn't expect to see the kind of development in South County that did occur, but it wasn't planned for properly. We have the ability to do that now. I think this project is appropriately planned. I think that the onsite management is good. I think that the builder, who's also going to be the long-term owner of it, is going to manage it very, very well, like they have their other projects. We're not just, this is not just a hope and a prayer. This is a track record from an organization that's done a very good job throughout Southern California for decades. So, you know, we're not just hoping something happens. We see the track record. We know that this is something that they've done many, many times, and it's going to enhance the area. So with all of that, I don't know if there's any other comments, but if there aren't, I'll make a motion.
And I'll second that motion.
All right. I'll move the staff.
Motion accepted. Thank you. All right, let's go ahead and vote.
And Madam Mayor and the council, since we pulled this off consent, we do have to do a roll call vote. So I will start with that. Councilmember Voits, was that yes? Okay. Councilmember Robinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Teddermer?
Aye.
Mayor Protam?
Aye.
Mayor Motazidi?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
All right. Thank you. All right. This moves us to our public hearing portion of the discussion this evening. Item eight is a public hearing considering a registration fee for Kids Factory program. So I would like to open the public hearing. Madam City Manager will introduce the item. So, and then also, I guess, Madam City Clerk will let us know if we have speakers. Thank you.
Okay, Mayor Motazidi, we have Deputy City Manager Brett Channing up to give a brief presentation.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. At the July 21, 2020 City Council meeting, direction was given to staff to contract with Saddleback Valley Unified School District to bring back Kids Factory for the 2020-21 school year, but in a way that was cost-neutral or low-cost to the city. In order to achieve this, the city, the current fee for Kids Factory needs to be updated. The fee for Kids Factory is established within the city's master fee schedule, which is attached to the staff report. And pursuant to California Government Code Section 66018, the city is required to hold a public hearing with the adoption of a new fee or a fee increase. Over the past month, staff has worked with SVUSD in discussing Kids Factory program and the establishment of a revised fee. Historically, registering for Kids Factory has required a one-time fee that would be paid regardless of when registration occurred. So for instance, someone enrolling in September, that would pay the same amount as someone that enrolled in April. However, because there's still so much uncertainty surrounding the coming school year, it was determined that a monthly fee for Kids Factory would be best because it provides flexibility for SVUSD and for families for potential changing needs throughout the year. So if a parent's work situation changes or childcare situation changes during the school year, then there's the ability to sign up or remove their child from the program without being locked into a year-long cost. The proposed monthly fee for Kids Factory is $95 and $75 for the month of December. The fee for December is less due to the two-week holiday break. With this fee, SVUSD would be able to operate Kids Factory at a low cost to the city, estimated to be approximately $2,700. This, of course, assumes that there is no interruption during the school year, and the program is able to hit its projected numbers of registrations. Pursuant to the Lake Forest Municipal Code 3.03.030, a supermajority or fourthists of the city council must approve the fee change upon approval, or, excuse me, and upon approval, the fee will go into effect immediately. Therefore, staff is recommending that the city council approve the resolution attached to the staff report revising the master fee schedule to show Kids Factory fee of $95 a month and $75 for the month of December. Upon approval of this fee change, the SVUSD Board of Education will be discussing a contract for this, with the city, for Kids Factory at its coming school board meeting of September 10. If approved, the contract will be signed by the city manager as directed by the city council, and the program should be able to start shortly after students are back in SVUSD schools for in-person teaching. That concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mayor Motazidi, this is Scott Voits. I have a question.
Mayor Motazidi?
I'm sorry. I was mute.
Okay. May I?
Yes.
Okay. You know, with the pandemic going on and schools, distance learning, what flexibility do we have in the contract we will have with the school district? Because when they go back, it doesn't look like they're going to go back full-time. So you're going to have three days on, two days off, and then you're going to have the next week, you're going to have two days on, three days off. How do we manage it with the families when you have part-distance learning and not? Is it still going to be the same hours?
It is still going to be the same hours, Councilmember Voits. For the elementary schools, they are going to what's been proposed of a hybrid schedule, where there's children coming in the morning, and then they're coming in the afternoon. So they will be coming to school every day. Just some will be coming in the morning, and some will be coming in the afternoon.
So we're going to have a morning session or just afternoon?
We will not. It's only going to be in the afternoon.
Is this, so this is, the Kids Factory is what we're discussing tonight, and the teen lounge is no longer right now? We're not talking about that?
We are not talking about teen lounge. It's just for Kids Factory.
Okay, so $95 a month for the families. Do we have a margin of, I guess we don't have the contract before us, but how many children does it take to participate in the Kids Factory to break near even or keep at low cost?
So we're estimating, I believe it was about 363 kids for the first two months of the program, and then it would go up to 420 kids for the remainder of the school year.
I have nothing further.
Other comments?
Brett, maybe I do have another question while we're waiting for Madam Mayor to get back on. Do we have a proposed budget of how much we consider as low-cost? I mean, because obviously, this is a flex, I mean, we don't, this is fluid. We don't know how many kids are going to be enrolled even. So if 200 kids enroll, are we going to be under, where are we with dollar amount?
Yeah, so certainly, this is going to be a fluid situation. It's a little bit of a shot in the dark in terms of what the cost is going to be to the city. With the contract, we are only at, it's a full-cost contract. So what we'll be signing is the true cost for the program. The revenues are separate. So if we were to receive the amount of revenues that is being projected, and we've been working with SVUSD on, then it could generate enough revenues to where the cost to the city would only be about $3,000.
Okay, so I just, it gets this common sense. Have we discussed with the school district that maybe there are kids that could, income-wise, qualify for assistance? Is there a way that we could do a scholar? Because the Saddleback Unified School already has an after-school program called the TLC. And obviously, that's out of the reach for some families. But is there not a way that we could do this cheaper by maybe helping scholarship some kids in, or give grants to some of the kids instead of having our own separate program and letting the kids participate in the full program at TLC, which would probably be a better deal for them? Because in TLC, they actually get homework help. They get to play on the fields. With Kids Factory, they're stuck in the lunch tables. And so I think that if we were able to work out maybe the budgetary, how much we're willing to put in and say, hey, we're going to qualify this amount of money to go to scholarshiping families that may not be able to afford the whole TLC tuition, we're willing to help. Because I think it's a better deal for them because they have, they have help. They have kids there to help with the homework. They have kids on the field where they can play on the field instead of being confined to the lunch tables. I'm just thinking, have we discussed that with them possibly?
We haven't negotiated anything along those lines.
I think that's something, I like to move that as a recommendation. Maybe we do that as an alternative. Because with this, we don't know. I mean, are they going to shut down again? And then are we still on tabs to be paying staff to be on COVID unemployment? I mean, it is, open a Pandora's box here. I mean, if we could take a chunk of money and say, we're willing to put $40,000 into this program, or $50,000 in the program, let's help partially pay depending on income status, you know, let's help some families and let some kids get into the actual TLC program, which would be my preference.
Sorry. So we're saying that we want a consensus item for a scholarship program? Is that what's on the table?
No, that's not on the table. It was, it was just a discussion item, Mayor. I'm sorry. If you missed it, I basically said that with the amount of money that we're going to be spending, or we actually don't know how much money we're going to be spending because this is, with the pandemic, we really don't know how many kids are going to enroll in the Kids Factory with a split schedule. My suggestion was, did staff talk to Saddleback Unified School District about possibly doing a scholarship program where we can actually qualify families by income-wise and maybe help Saddleback Unified School District get more kids into TLC rather than start a adjacent program? And the advantage of TLC over Kids Factory is, on TLC, they get to use the playgrounds. They get to play outside. They get to play on the fields. They get to have after-school homework help. In TLC, they don't get to go on the fields. They don't get the after-school help and homework, but they do in TLC. So I was thinking that for the amount of money, because we really don't know how much money this is going to cost us, because we don't know how many kids are going to sign up, I would, my preference would be trying to get as many kids into TLC rather than start up a shadowing program where we have basically daycare with no activities, no extra work for the homework. So just discussion-wise, bring it up to city staff to throw out an idea.
Okay. Well, I think originally, we wanted to see whether or not, how it would fare right now. And then I think, I think the discussion of scholarships was on the table for something. So I think, I think we just want to see how it goes because so many parents wanted it. So I think we wanted to do that, and then we'll have a check-in. I mean, I'm okay with this fee personally. And I think we have a speaker on this, by the way.
Mayor, we have one speaker, and it's Larissa Clark. Larissa, would you like to come up and make your comments? Thank you.
Okay, Larissa Clark, 22-year resident of Lake Forest and council candidate for District Five. I'm here to speak in support of funding Kids Factory. In my district, we have two Title III schools, all of wooden gates. These schools serve as hard-working These schools serve as hard-working, blue-collar families like mine, and Kids Factly, Factory is greatly needed because of the lower cost than TLC. My son went to Olive Wood, and when I was ill battling ovarian cancer, he went to Kids Factory when I had afternoon treatments or appointments, because it was costly for my family. The lower cost compared to TLC was a huge help to my family and others in my neighborhood. Families in District 5 need programs like Kids Factory the most. We need after-school childcare with safe environments to support working families and essential workers with children during this COVID time. At Kids Factory, yes, they stay at the picnic benches, but there are art projects, they take them out to the field, they do play sports, they will help you with homework, and there are other things offered if the student or child asks at Kids Factory. I find it ironic that you defunded Kids Factory due to budget and COVID-19, yet you funded and approved National Core project in my district. The National Core project allows non-legal-status people and children to live there and receive funds and resources from the taxpayers, yet you defund Kids Factory for residents and citizens that are legally here. Will Core kids get to use the Fact Kids Factory, bumping other kids off this list? You should take care of our own residents first. Where were your concerns, Mr. Voits, the night of the Voight for National Core? Voits, you say you represent District 3 and all of Lake Forest, yet you have not returned one email of mine in four years, even before we went to districts. Not one email.
Well, you were managing the recall of all of those.
Excuse me, this is my time, sir. I emailed you a lot, and it's a slap in the face to all of us residents. Mr. Teddermer, I agree, we were forced into districts, but you, sir, in the last two years, have not answered one of my emails either. So to tell me that you care about the residents all over the city is baloney, in my opinion. You talk the talk, but you don't walk the walk. You have never returned an email to me. You haven't returned emails by other residents in District 5 on this very issue. Yeah, we can believe in the good and hope that the non-legal statuses aren't, or there's one or two, but let's be realistic. The drug area I was speaking about was the businesses, not the actual area National Core plans to improve. The only reason Kids Factory is back on the agenda is due to a huge public outcry. Obviously, this is something the residents need and want throughout the city. We need Kids Factory in District 5 to help us working families and the essential workers that live along the freeway. Please vote to reinstate kids funding, funding and Kids Factory. Fund our children, fund our families, fund our legal residents, and fund our future for the city. Fund Kids Factory area, my area, that needs it the most. Do the right thing for once. Do not pander to me and tell me that you care about the whole city and my district and all of that, when you can't even give me the common courtesy to reply to an email, speak to me, or engage me in a conversation. I was very nice to you four years ago, I was very nice to you two years ago, but all of your actions sealed the deal.
Mayor Motazidi? Mayor Protem, I do believe, uh, the mayor's gonna ask you to chair the meeting from here on out.
Okay, pen-shading, huh?
I'm sorry?
Pen-shading?
Yes.
All right. Very good hitter with pen-shading, so we'll see. Um, okay, well, I believe that will close the public hearing. Uh, bring her back to the council for further questions, comments. Councilmember Robinson?
So what have we heard from the school district about when they would start? How that, how this would all operate, whether it might get shut down at some point in the middle? And how does that communication occur with, you know, poten- uh, potential participants?
Councilman Robinson, um, you know, this is obviously changing by the week as, as things come down from the state, but what we had originally heard, um, when we were going off the watch list, was that the school district would be looking at a starting date of, um, having kids back in school on September 21st, and that they would be starting Kids Factory shortly thereafter, either within the week or so. Um, however, now with, um, the governor's new reopening, um, restrictions that he put into place that came out of Friday, uh, I just saw an email that it looks like the school district sent out, that it may be a week or two later that they'd be having kids back for, um, in-person teaching. Um, however, they disurged that they would be starting Kids Factory as soon as possible once the kids are back for in-person learning.
Okay, thank you very much. I understand that at the school board meeting, I think it was last week, um, they laid off or furloughed, uh, a little under 200 employees, I think it was 179 or something like that. Were any of these, uh, Kids Factory, um, staff a part of that? Do we know, um, and would they be reinstated as a process, or?
I'm not sure, um, I had heard that there were some staff that were furloughed back earlier in the summer, when the city had originally, um, discussed not bringing back Kids Factory for next year. So I'm not aware of the staff that were a part of that furlough or layoff, though, last week.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, those are all my questions, just from a comment perspective, and I've shared this previously. Um, I, I don't doubt that this is a valuable, um, valuable need for, um, a number of people in the community. There were a lot of people that came to the mic a few meetings ago and voiced their support and their disappointment that it was being, um, that the funding was being, uh, cut from the city. I, I have some serious reservations about whether or not this is the city's responsibility. It doesn't mean that it's a great program, but whether it's the city's responsibility. Um, at the time, I, I supported, uh, the mayor's, um, suggestion, I think it was her motion, um, to increase the fees so we'd have more cost recovery. Um, in looking at this, does this match what that motion was at the time? Or is it a little bit less, uh, you know, since we're moving to a month-to-month rather than a flat fee, maybe, sorry, I let you sit down, if you could answer that for me as well?
Sure, Councilman Robinson. Um, so at the last meeting, when we had talked about more cost neutrality and cost recovery, we had discussed a $600 for the year fee, and again, that was assuming that there was an option on the table for all students to return, uh, to school, which would potentially allow enrollment to be around the 800 or 900 students, um, with everyone back in school. However, after that meeting, the board, uh, for SVUSD voted for those reopening options, which did not include full kids back at school, it's just a hybrid or a full-distance learning. So, um, in discussions with SVUSD, we knew that through the hybrid model, there's gonna be a lot less kids that potentially would sign up for Kids Factory. And as a result, um, we would have to raise that fee a little bit higher to achieve that, um, cost recovery. So if, if this ended up being an eight-month program, which it would be if it started October 1st, and someone was enrolled for the entire period, it would be just under $800 for the year.
Okay, thank you very much, and it's at the $95 a month level and prorated? If there were, um, would it be prorated if it started September 21st and, for that?
Correct.
Number of days, and then if it ended June 15th, and?
That, yeah, that would be more handled probably by SVUSD and how they would handle those registrations, but yes, in our discussions with them, is do some sort of proration if it started mid, mid-month.
Okay, all right. Uh, you know, like I said, it, it's clearly a service that I think is needed in the community. I'm just not really sure whether it's the city's responsibility. I, I do believe in general that, uh, it, it falls on, uh, either the school district or the private sector in some way, but, you know, at this point, um, since there are no other options, and we're in the midst of, uh, very interesting times, you know, I continue to support the motion to try to attempt to get as much cost recovery as we can, um, and try to keep the program going, um, even though $95 a month can be very significant. Um, it's, it's a, um, small amount compared to what you'd have to pay to have, you know, an individual, uh, taking care of one, two, three, four children, um, at a time. So it's, uh, I'm, I'm optimistic that, long-term, um, this will show a private organization or the private sector, um, you know, what potential revenue stream is in place so that they can try to figure out what gap funding might be needed, um, to try to put something together, whether it was something like Boys and Girls Club, YMCA, or, or, uh, maybe even the school district itself, once they saw a model that could work. But, um, you know, the, the, a little under half a million dollars a year that we were putting into this, um, you know, there's a lot of things the city's responsible for. I, I don't feel, again, that this is one of those areas. I, I know some people might disagree with me, but, you know, every, uh, amount of funds that we spend on something that I don't believe is part of our core responsibility is something we have to take away from a, another area. And, uh, so, um, again, I'm supportive of where the mayor has, uh, brought this discussion to tonight, and I'll leave it at that.
Councilmember Teddermer?
Thank you, did you move the item?
I, I haven't yet, just, just discussing.
Thank you. Well, I'll move, uh, staff recommendation, uh, would seek some clarification. Though comment was made that we were prepared to spend $3.7 million of city money for National Core, why wouldn't we fund this? Those are two completely separate pots of money. The 3.7, correct me if I'm wrong, the 3.7 million dollars was specifically collected for affordable housing. It does not sit on the city's ledger in terms of a general fund expenditure. So there's, they're not related to each other.
Correct.
Okay, just wanna clarify for the record that it's not, it's not one or the other, it's not one cannibalizing the other. Great, thank you.
I'll, uh, second the motion with the clarification that it allowed the city manager to sign the contract if they're able to get there, so. Motion's been made and seconded with an amendment friendly to yours.
I support, I support that.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Voits, I'm sorry.
Oh, I, I have one more question. Um, the contract, we haven't signed yet, so we're not in this contract as of yet, because of the ministerially wise, um, the contract will start when you meet with them?
Uh, it would have to be approved by the board at their next meeting, and their next meeting is September 10th.
But it's not, nothing, there'll be no retroactive charges, because school's not been in?
No.
And we haven't hired employees?
Correct.
Okay. Um, uh, just one last plea to, um, possibly, um, talk to the school district about, um, a integrated, um, grant program that we, as a city, could actually help with. Um, I, I think it's a win, a win for the children, because, um, like I said, um, I know the program, and the playground is not open to the Kids Factory children, because that's where TLC plays. Um, and that, uh, if there's homework help, it's not in the program, so it's just by the goodness of somebody watching, so I, I, that'd be my preference. So thank you, but I have nothing else. Call for the vote.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Um, please vote.
Mayor Motazidi, may I have your vote?
Yes, aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you, um, that will take us to discussion items, items number nine through 12. Uh, item number nine is continued discussion regarding procedural policy and legal considerations regarding possible development of Normandale Park Site. Madam City Manager?
Uh, Mayor, and members of the council, this is an item that was put on your, um, council agenda by the council consensus process. It was requested by Councilmember Robinson. We heard this earlier in the year, and the council asked that we table it at that point and bring it back to a future meeting, so here we are. And, um, we're gonna have our city attorney, Mel Richardson, give an overview of this item.
If I, if I may, before we start, um, in reading the staff report, um, it's become apparent to me that IRWD has an easement that runs through the property, um, and out of an abundance of caution, um, I will recuse myself from this item because of that. So I will leave the dais and, uh, let the remainder deliberate. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Teddermer. Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Mr. Mayor Protem, um, just a, a brief overview of the, uh, the issues at play here. So since 1999, the city has owned a 10.713-acre parcel known as the Normandale Park Site. Um, it is not currently, nor has it ever been used for park and recreation purposes. In fact, since its dedication to the county back in the 80s, it's really been untouched, except for, uh, kids, kids who might play out there from time to time. Um, uh, as I said, the city has, has, has owned this parcel since 1999. Um, the city has various options with this property, uh, as we discussed at our previous meeting in, in May. Those options include doing nothing with the property, maintaining the status quo, uh, developing it as a park site, it was dedicated to the city as parkland, um, or pursuing the sale of the parkland. Um, state law allows a city, under, uh, procedures dictated by the government code, to abandon, that's the term used, to abandon parkland after going through a detailed process, including, uh, hearings, noticing, protest hearings, et cetera. Um, if all of the criteria are met for the abandonment, then the parkland can be sold. Um, so those are the three options, again, do nothing, develop as, as a park site, or potentially sell the parkland. Now, if the city, uh, council decided to proceed with the final of those alternatives, which is to sell the parkland, um, it should be aware that there, there are significant, um, practical and legal considerations, uh, at play, which would require, uh, significant time, effort, and expense on the part of the city. Um, one of those considerations is, is the cleanup of title. Um, as, as, as Mark Teddermer noted, there are easements over the property in favor of a number of entities. Um, any sale and development of this, of this parcel would require some, some work to clean up title. One of the most significant title issues is the existence of CCNRs, um, that encumber the property. Uh, those, those CCNRs govern the Normandale HOA, which is immediately adjacent to the park site. And this park site, uh, to a, to a certain extent, is encumbered by those HOAs. So, um, the city would need to, at some point, engage with the HOA if it wanted to proceed, uh, with the abandonment and potential sale of the park site. Um, those are the broad, the broad-brush parameters, um, that, uh, that apply to this park site. I'm happy to answer any questions, but I think that should give you enough information to have your discussion and to give staff, um, a direction regarding how to proceed. Again, I can answer any questions you have as, as, as the conversation proceeds.
Do any of my colleagues have questions before we see if there's any public speakers?
Um, yeah, um, there's a, there's another park site that's on Lake Forest Drive at Commerce, um, that's actually in the same predicament, um, as possible sale or park site, um, which is deeded to, um, from the homeowners association, which has CCNRs attached to it. On that property, um, um, because of, uh, financial restraints, we haven't developed the park, and I think that's the same, um, problem that we've had with the Normandale Park Site, because it's adjacent to the Lake Forest Sports Park, and there've been talk about making a trail over in a plaza park there, or actually, um, trying to attach the Regency Park Site that's on Regency Drive. Um, I think because, because of the fact that, um, the financial pandemic, that the city has been forced, um, through, through the, um, COVID crisis, um, I, I, I thank you for, um, bringing, and looking up to me, uh, for us. I, I don't support the development of the project, and, and I don't support the development of the project as a park at this time, but, um, I think that it, it's something that's good that we know about, but thank you. Um, it's actually in our five-year budget, uh, as a park site. Normandale has always been, continued to roll over in our five-year, um, general plan. As a park, thank you.
Madam City Clerk, do we have any requests from the public to speak on this item?
I have received no additional speaker cards.
Okay, thank you, back to my colleagues. Uh, Councilmember Robinson?
Thanks a lot, yeah, I, I brought it up because, you know, the entire eight years that I've, uh, sat here, um, this has been on the, the CIP plan, but as we all know, there's no funding mechanism for the park, so, um, without the dollars, it could never be developed. I think that if we were to look at some creative solutions here, we might be able to get something put there from a park perspective that could connect with, uh, the sports park. So, um, when I first brought this up, I didn't have any specific, um, type of development in mind. I mentioned commercial, retail, uh, office industrial, residential, um, and it could be something that could be, um, again, a, a creative way to get some of- could be, again, a creative way to get some of the land used as a park. So, as an example, maybe someone would want, would want to build something like a small little water park like they have at Boomers on the, off of the 405, right? So they want to develop part of the property, and we want to build some parkland around it. It could be that someone wants to build an corporate office headquarters, which is just adjacent to it. If you're going toward like power cleaners and the gas station and that direction, there's some corporate headquarters that are right on that cul-de-sac there, so that could be something that kind of makes sense there. And then again, part of that, so a corporation could buy the property, and then we could use some of those funds to build a partial part of a park. So, just to try to think creatively about it, rather than, you know, if we do nothing, it's going to sit just the way it is today, it'll continue to be on our CIP, it'll have no funding, and I, I would guess that I'd come here as a resident eight years, eight years from now, and it would be in the same spot that it is today. So, you know, all I'm asking, when I brought this up, was just that we try to look creatively at what possibilities we might be able to do there. It could be that we engage with the homeowners there and say, what might make sense? Because if we're going to have to work with that HOA potentially, you know, then what would you like to see here that would complement your neighborhood in some way where we could develop a win-win situation? So I just want to give the, the staff the ability to kind of start to explore that. That's my idea, and so that's, that's why I brought it up.
Mayor Motazidi, do you have any comments?
Um, yes, I do. Sorry, I do have a comment or question. I was wondering, if we were to entertain selling the site, would we have to sell the entire 10 points, I think it's 10.5 acres, would we want to sell the entire acreage? Or would we sell, you know, half of it and, and then use the proceeds from the development to develop a part from the other half? Has that been brought up or thought about?
Mr. City Attorney?
Madam Mayor, Mr. Mayor Protem, I can answer the legal part of that question. The council can abandon a portion or all of the property, can sell a portion or all of the property. I believe part of what was being said previously was, in terms of creative solutions, the ability to maybe do something just like that. But legally, yes, you can sell a portion of the property.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, that was mine.
Hold on a second, councilmember voice. Go ahead, Mayor Motazidi.
Oh, I was going to say, that was it for my questions.
Okay, councilmember voice?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we just received and filed this report at this time, and thank you for the diligence and looking into it.
I'll second that and have a question for staff. With that recommendation, receive and file, can we do any of the things that councilmember Robinson requested, looking into various options with it? Understand it's been on the CIP for a long time, understand the complications of a potential sale and all those other things. Can we look at some of those options to bring it back at a later date when the time's appropriate?
Yes, we could do that. We could do some research and give it to the council as a white paper, and then it'd be up to councilmembers to bring that back to the agenda.
Okay, then with that, to your motion, I would add that.
Yeah, if that's already, it just received.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second. Yeah, call for the vote.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes with three yes votes, one no vote by councilmember Robinson, with councilmember Teddermer not, not voting on this item.
Thank you very much, and we'll wait for just a moment for councilmember Teddermer to return to the dais and do number 10. Item number 10, the 2019-2021 Capital Improvement Project's mid-cycle update and budget amendment. Madam City Manager?
Mayor and members of the council, I'd like to bring up Public Works Director Tom Wheeler to introduce the item.
Thank you, Mayor, and, and members of the council. Tonight, we'd like to take just a moment to go through our CIP project status, bring you up to, bring you up to speed on the project status. Give me one click on that, please. Thank you. So we'll talk about the project status, talk about carrying over our budgets from last fiscal year to this fiscal year, so we can continue working on those projects. And we also have a few mid-cycle recommendations. We'd like to add five new projects. We have budget adjustments on a few other projects, and then also talk about some upcoming projects that we'd like to, to make sure we inform council on the direction and in our, our recommendations. So with that, I'd like to introduce Taylor Abernathy, who leads our CIP efforts, and will be available for, for any questions afterwards.
So our 2019-2021 Capital Improvement Program has 56 total projects in it. Currently, it's consisting of nine street improvement projects, 16 traffic improvement projects, 28 park improvement projects, and three environmental. The current status of our entire program, we've completed 14 projects from fiscal year 2019 to 2020. We have 13 projects currently in the bidding and construction phase, with an additional 22 projects in design, and then seven projects in the pre-planning phase. This graphic highlights some of the projects that have been completed from fiscal year 1920 throughout the city. Also, we do have some citywide projects that were completed, such as annual sidewalk replacements and rehabilitations. The next couple of slides is going to highlight some of those. The most notable project that was completed was the Civic Center Campus. That was completed in December of 2019. Moving into some street projects that were completed, leading down Civic Center Drive, you see a before and after picture. This leads to our new Civic Center Campus. Additional street projects is the raised median projects. There's five various locations within the city. This particular location is for Bake Parkway east of Portola. Then our most recently completed project is our arterial slurry sill project. We completely re-slurried the streets of Toledo, Serrano, and Ridge Route. This is a before and after picture of the intersection at Ridge Route and Toledo.
Can I add a question?
Sure.
Um, we, we chose to use some of our, our Measure A money to upgrade our asphalt. Is this upgraded asphalt, and what consists of that? Because it sure looks nice there.
Yes, so, yes, we use infrastructure reserve funds to supplement our pavement management program to continue to try to keep our condition index above 80.
So is there an extra compound that you add to this as you lay it?
So specifically for the arterial slurry project, these are our low-density arterial streets, so ones that we don't have as much traffic on. So we use a type-two slurry. It's a little bit more robust than what we put on the residential streets, but mainly we use a hybrid approach where we go out and we, when we patch repair the highly deteriorated areas, get those back up, and then we recoat the entire surface so we can get that prolonged life. We believe that this approach will give us seven to 10 years of service life on the, on the project, so, and it will greatly increase because we've now touched a great number of square foot within our city limits, and so that's what helps the PCI grades. Sometimes we have the more cost, costly projects like the reconstructions, those projects don't touch as much square footage and that, and they cost a lot more money, so it doesn't quite raise your, raise your scores as, as intended.
Thank you, thanks for, I'm sorry to interrupt, thank you.
No problem.
I'd just like to make sure that our standard is above Mission Viejo, that, so, thank you.
Continuing our good work, yes. So then to go over some completed park projects, this is a shade structure that was recently installed at the El Toro Park. Again, another shade structure at Pittford Park, and then this is the Peachwood Park. As you can see, there's a before and after. There was some older shade structures that were taken down, and now you can see the new hexagonal gazebo that is up for residents to enjoy. This graphic highlights some of the projects that are currently in bidding and construction. Again, we have citywide projects like our traffic signal system upgrade projects that's there, but it just gives you a pictorial of how we're doing things in various areas within the city. And then to talk about our design projects, we wanted to highlight the Lake Forest Transportation Mitigation Program projects. These are two of our long-term, multi-year projects. The top picture here is a picture of the Bake and Tribuco intersection improvements. This project adds dual left turns off of eastbound Bake and through right on Tribuco to Irvine. There was additional right-of-way requirements and the relocation of Southern Cal Edison transmission poles. So here in the picture, they have the very large Southern California Edison poles. We looked at a few different preferred alternatives. The city's preferred alternative was to widen to the north. We contacted Southern Cal Edison, and we determined that the city did have prior rights. So the relocation of those poles and the responsibility, the cost to relocate those poles is on the responsibility of Southern Cal Edison. This is a million-dollar savings to the project for the city, and it did allow us to move forward with our preferred alternative. The right-of-way that would be required, it's actually from Southern Cal Edison property as well, it's in the city of Irvine. We didn't want to go through a LAFCO process to make a boundary change, but the city staff is working with the city of Irvine on a co-op agreement. And then by widening to the north into Irvine, this was going to minimize the impacts to our city residents and businesses in that. Currently, the relocation of the Southern Cal Edison transmission poles, there's an estimated 12 to 18-month procurement timeline. They're obviously very large and, and take time to do that, so staff will come back and provide additional updates as we get a little further along in that right-of-way acquisition and utility relocation process. Our second picture here is the El Toro-Portola intersection improvements. This is looking west. This project was to add a second right here where the gore is. It requires some additional right-of-way, and so that would be a second right from the westbound El Toro to northbound Portola. The right-of-way requires work, or acquiring right-of-way from the county. As part of that discussion with the county, they requested that we install a bike entry point on the northwest corner of the intersection, similar to what you see here on the southeast part. Staff is in the process of continuing that negotiation, and currently, staff anticipates the project could be ready for bidding in the first quarter of 2021. This concludes the general status update of the projects, and so to go more-
Can you go back to that previous slide for just a second, a quick question for you? So that's El Toro Road looking westbound towards Portola?
Correct.
And what's the need for the second turn lane there?
It was identified within our Lake Forest Transportation Mitigation Program. There are various movements that it analyzes during that process, and one of the improvements was people coming from and through Mission Viejo and allowing them to get through. So these are like our Lake Forest Transportation Mitigation Program. Irvine has NITM, which is their, their version of that, and these are coordinated efforts amongst various cities and our models to provide traffic flow improvements.
I drive that intersection a lot. I've never seen an impact in that right turn lane. I'm a little surprised that we'd be looking for a second turn lane there. I've never, the street can be fairly crowded at times, but not the turn pockets, and I drive that frequently, so I'm a little surprised by that, but thank you, appreciate it.
So specifically within our report, we, there's a request and recommendation to move carryovers. There's two types. We have our revenue carryovers. Staff's recommending to carry these over. These are for ongoing grant-funded projects. In addition, staff recommends carrying over approximately $16.3 million. This is for prior fiscal year projects and allows staff to continue to develop those Next, there is several, five specifically, new appropriations that staff is recommending. These two traffic improvements are accelerated schedules. They're directly a result of the Toll Brothers Development, which is the property formerly known as Nakasi Nursery. These projects are funded by developer contributions identified within the, the development agreement. Specifically Bake and Baffin Bay, this project would study installation of raised medians on Bake to restrict left turn movements from Baffin Bay to Bake. This is one of the improvements. And then the second improvement, this project would add dual left turns, as shown on the graphic. There's additional right-of-way required. In this particular case, there's three different agencies that we would have to negotiate with. This is Orange County Flood Control District. It's not, it's a minimal amount of right-of-way there. Then this, this right-of-way portion would be within the city of Irvine, so again, another negotiation. And then finally, we would have to obtain some right-of-way that's in a HOA landscape area here within the city of Lake Forest. Other new appropriations that we have are grant-dependent. They're for traffic signal synchronization projects. OCTA requires projects to be included in our capital improvement budget in order to be eligible for grant funding. These three traffic signal synchronization projects allow staff to apply for that grant funding. There, no funding is requested at this time, and staff would request the city's 20% budget share if a project was, was awarded. So this is just a chart highlighting those recommended appropriations from staff. The first two traffic improvements along Bake, one at Baffin Bay and Toledo, staff's recommendation is, is to make those projects shelf-ready. This will allow the projects to be on the books for when the first, when the funding becomes available, the funding will become available upon pulling the first building permit of the Toll Brothers Development. And then, as noted, the other ones, there's no funding request, they're just grant-dependent. Additionally, we have some project adjustments for existing projects. This chart highlights some of them, and one of those projects specifically is the Arbor Entry Gateway renovation, and our assistant city engineer, Doug Urbans, can come up to discuss that.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. If you remember, earlier this year, we brought back the preliminary design for the Arbor's Gateway renovations. Right now, we're asking for an appropriation for the design and construction of the Arbor's Gateway renovations based on the preliminary design. To refresh your memory, the preliminary design includes improvements that remove the concrete walkways, install security fencing, add new drought-tolerant California-type landscape planting, and reducing the turf areas. We also took the preliminary design to a virtual town hall earlier this year and solicited input from the residents, and also posted an online survey, and I'd like to share a couple of those results with you. We asked the residents what they thought about limiting access through the project site, and out of 484 respondents, an overwhelming majority thought it was a great idea. We also asked the residents what they thought about possible use of outdoor dining for the area at this location, and again, it had an overwhelming support of the residents. From that, we reached out to the adjacent businesses and property management companies, and one of the businesses did respond to the city. Mr. Pennix spoke to you earlier this evening, owner of Brew Grill and Market. He provided a proposal to the city, which was included as an attachment to your packet. They're proposing to utilize the Arbor section that's adjacent to his business. They'd like to include a remote ordering station, access stairs that accesses his business, and installation of additional fencing. City has been working with him to discuss lease options for that site. Another project we're asking for additional funding for is the sports car, sports complex paver replacements. There were pavers that were installed, and those pavers right now are coming up and they're breaking up, providing a trip hazard. There were pavers that were installed, and those pavers right now are coming up and they're breaking up, providing a trip hazard. And you can see in the photo on the right that there are some bleeding from the rust from the pavers. What we are proposing is to remove all of the pavers and the areas adjacent to the pavers to, and replace them with stamped concrete as shown in the photo on the lower left. At this time, I'll bring Taylor back up to finish the rest of the presentation.
Thank you, Doug. So now we want to go over some recommendations to existing projects. One of our existing projects is the I-5 interchange signs. This project's general intent was to make clear and visible a direction to drivers to hopefully potentially reduce weaving down near both I-5 onramps. The locations there are for Lake Forest and El Toro. City Council definitely recognized the need. And then staff, as an interim measure, installed medallions that you guys have probably come to see. Those medallions were also noticed by Caltrans. Caltrans requested that the city provide them our template, and you're now starting to see them pop up on the interstate system. These, these medallions have been observed, have significant improvements throughout the installation time from when we had it installed. So this interim measure has been a great success for the city. However, staff is concerned with the cost and the aesthetic of the large Caltrans standard signs. Therefore, staff has prepared a couple photo simulations at both locations. These signs are eight-foot in height, and they're estimated to cost $350,000. So on the screen, we have the Lake Forest location. Here's, was a before, and this would be an after, to give you guys an example. And then this is the El Toro location. In addition to staff's concerns, we did receive comments from the Planning Commission, where they expressed concerns as well about these signs potentially changing the character of these business thoroughfares. And so here would be a before and then an after at the El Toro. So staff's recommendation, as an alternative to the large signs, is to work with Caltrans to revise the signage at the Signal Mass Arm at Bridge or in El Toro. The proposed sign would include directional arrows indicating freeway onramps as well. In addition to that, staff would continue to monitor these locations and potentially could install additional medallions or roadway signs in the future if needed and bring that back to council. Staff's recommendation would save approximately $350,000. The next project or program that we would like to update you on is our Residential Slurry Seal Program. Zone C, the area highlighted in red in the middle. That project was a fiscal year 1920 project. It was delayed due to COVID based on the county and state stay-at-home orders. Now staff is recommending that we go ahead and bid both the Zones C and G, which is the fiscal year 2021 projects, at the same time, hopefully realizing some economy of scale and getting us back on track for our repair cycle. Then the last project that we wanted to provide an update on is our Neighborhood Park Renovation Program. In 2019, staff completed the Peachwood Park Project. Council had recently awarded a contract for the construction of Cherry Park. And in the bottom left, you see inactive construction of that park. That leaves the remaining eight parks within the program. Staff plans on that being distributed in three different packages. The next package would be for Darren Mountberry and Pebble Creek. We'd have this ready currently, and we could put it back out to bid by the, in September. And then it would be followed by two more packages of projects, which include Vintage, Sundowner, Regency, Rancho Serrano, and Borrego Overlook Parks. And these would be ready for bidding in early 2021. With that, this is just a recap of staff's recommendations that we're requesting approval for. We are requesting council approve an amendment to the 2019-21 CIP, which adds five new projects and adjusts the budget for six existing projects. Staff is recommending council approve a resolution amending the CIP budget for 2019-2021. And to approve the carryovers of revenues of $53,000 and the carryover for projects of $16.3 million. With that, we're here to ask you.
Anybody have questions for staff before we see if there's any public comment?
I do.
Councilmember Tatum.
Thank you, Mayor Potem. Could I ask you to go back two slides, please?
Sure.
Thank you. For the city attorney, while I don't live in C, I'm close to C, and raises the question about 500 feet?
There's an exception called the public generally exception when it comes to conflicts. And when, when an action taken by the city is going to affect a certain portion of individuals in the city, and there can be no conflict when it comes to the annual slurry seal, that exception does apply. So there's, there's simply no issue there.
Okay, so no issue with me voting on this item, which includes that?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, too, because I live in G, so. Councilmember voice.
And I live in C, so.
So.
Either, else we wouldn't have a quorum.
Yeah, I'm glad you're on slurry seal zones, C and G. With, with the post going out to bid for both C and G, economy of scale, do you think that we'd get a better price on our rate of slurry?
Yes, with our last arterial slurry project, due to the current economic status of things, we did receive a very favorable bid. I think our estimates were $1.6 million, and we were in the $1.2 million, I'm the low bidder.
Okay, if you go back two more slides. Okay, then one more. So I got a call the other day from Public Works Tom and saying that the signs that I recommended that we brought forth to council, and they all liked the idea of putting signs up there. When I came in the office with them, I looked at it and I said, "No, we don't want freeway signs on El Toro Road." And so I want to thank Tom and Tran for spending time with me and skinning that down. I actually liked the size of the new one. The, you know, the interchange signs, the five interstate signs that we had. The idea was, because I frequent El Toro Road to the freeway, and I was seeing so many near collisions on the on-ramp of the northbound side, because they get stuck in the lane there. And when slower traffic's coming, they, they make an immediate stop because they don't want to get on the freeway and try to get out. I can't tell you how many near, and those than Larissa and some of the other people that have lived closer there probably have seen so many accidents there. The, the paint on the pavement has done wonders. I got to say, my hat's off to staff for coming up with that. It was a suggestion you guys ran with, and I, I've got to commend you on that. I'm excited about the new sign. Just go two more forward. That one right there. That, with the new sign there, I think that will seal the deal. As people go, the five northbound would be clearly identified as the five northbound. And those going south can continue on El Toro Road to the Laguna Hillside. But I want to thank staff for working with us. And I'm coming up with such a great idea that's been identified as Caltrans is a great idea. So once again, Lake Forest is the cutting edge. And so I'm proud that Lake Forest is such a, a great motivator of good policy. And you know, it's all about location where we are. We're the gateway to South Orange County, and we've got to come up with these things. So thank you, staff. I have nothing else. I, I'd like to move staff recommendation with the movement of the money to the future. One more question, with the Arbor's Gateway. With that possibly going out to a private entity for lease, would that alleviate our problems with the homeless there because it would be private property there? Now, this is directed to you. With the lease of the property, would that become property owned by a, a private entity? There wouldn't be a park site. It would be private, so there would be no overnight camping there.
That's, that's correct. That's correct.
So would we allow them to fence that off completely where they could have receptions and?
It depends on the terms of the lease, but I think that is one of the, the options being envisioned.
Well, I'm in full support of that because I think that, you know, we as a city can be gauged by the, the quality of the businesses we have and the, the health of our businesses. And so it's important for us to support that. And I want to thank Matt for coming to the table on that. I know that we talked about it years ago or the beginning of last year. I'll possibly reach now to the restaurants in that, that area. So at that time, the property manager didn't care about it. But I'm, I'm excited about the opportunity there for fine dining in Lake Forest. Thank you. I move, I make the motion that we move staff recommendation with the movement of money.
I'll second for purposes of discussion. Councilmember Tatum.
Thank you. I wasn't going to second, but you beat me to it. Thank you for that. I'd also thank staff for attempting to front-load as much of this as we can in terms of getting those designs ready to go. So when the money's become available, we're off to the races and construct. I really appreciate that and anything we can do to push those forward. I'm a huge supporter, as you know. Thank you.
One second. Councilmember Robinson, do we have any public comments on this? We heard one earlier, I believe, but that was.
No additional comments.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Robinson.
Thank you very much. My first question is just about the traffic synchronization projects and everything that's kind of related to, to traffic improvements. I assume that some of these suggestions worked their way through the Traffic Commission, Traffic and Parking Commission. Do they have any comments that may not have been included in the staff report in any way? Or is my assumption wrong and it didn't go through?
No additional comments. Excuse me. We haven't taken these particular projects yet because they're not projects yet. So we wanted to get them, there's a new call for projects, for these synchronization projects in general. Every time we have a new street that's eligible, they're eligible about every three years, three to five years for synchronization. We go ahead and take those to you. When we get back and go through this process, that's when we take it back to the Traffic and Parking Commission, next spring, before we bring it back to council for, for addition to the CIP.
Okay, thanks. You know, I, I think there's some value in having some study sessions, talking with the Traffic and Parking Commission about some of the things that you're thinking about doing before bringing it to us, just so that we hear their feedback rather than it coming from us as an approved project. And now it's just, they're told, "Take a look. It's already done." So just a, a point of suggestion there. The, regarding the, the stonework at the sports park, using this as a specific example, but trying to look at it in a broader context. Is there something that we can be doing to look at materials and their long-term effects so that we don't run into situations like this in the future, where we can be talking with other cities that are using particular materials, things like that? Some of the challenges they're experiencing. I know it's been six years since we put this in, so at some point, it would have needed to be replaced anyway, but it's probably a little bit sooner than we thought. So are there some things that we can do to, to try to use this as a lesson learned?
Absolutely. This isn't a normal driving material that's used. It certainly was, was an architectural feature that was, that was put in as, as part of the project. We've talked to the architect about that. They certainly thought it was stone and it should hold up because of the, the way that particular stone crumbles, flaky layer. They did not anticipate it as, as professional designers. We didn't either. That's why we're, when you go to the engineers, we want concrete out there because it'll last forever.
Sure, I, I can appreciate that. And I know others want to bring design elements and certain aesthetics and, you know.
Always a.
Totally understand and, and, you know, so I, I think that, you know, the more information that we all can receive on, on things like that, the better. So that, you know, we're not having to put out an expenditure of sizable amount, you know, earlier than we would have expected. Then, just with the El Toro Road Raised Median Project, you know, it's a very minor thing again, but this, you know, inadvertent start and very minor expense. But, you know, that kind of jumped out at me as, you know, someone who, I, I expect them to be paying very close attention to what is expected out of them. And when they do something like that, it, it's a cause of concern for me. They could be a very, very, you know, skilled consultant. But, you know, I'd just probably keep my eye on, on the scope of work with them in, in its totality just because of a situation like this. So just another suggestion for you. Then, lastly, when it comes to the Arbor structures and, and that particular proposal that has been made by, by Brew, do you need any direction from us? Or are you just providing this, this presentation at this point? Does the direction just come in general with the recommended actions? What are you looking for?
We're looking for your feedback on what we showed you. And then we're going to continue to go down this road of negotiating lease terms with Brew. And we would bring back, if we're able to reach terms, we would bring that back to the council for final approval. So at this point, we just want to get your sense of the look and feel of the pictures that Brew provided to make sure that the council is comfortable with what they're looking at before we get too far down this road.
Okay, and that's included in the motion at this point? That you feel comfortable with that, so. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Hope I didn't grill you too much. You know, I, I know that a lot of this is just some of the contractors, consultants we're working with. And, you know, I just, I, when it comes again to the stonework and just looking at it in a broader context, you know, my preference would be that we don't, we're not the guinea pig trying something for the first time. So that's just my future suggestions on things that, you know, we, we see that they're tried and true first before we move forward. And, you know, it's, I'm sure you feel that way. Like you said, you'd prefer to just have pure concrete out there. And then there's going to be another side of it that's, that's going to be a little bit more focused on trying to make sure that it looks really nice. So, you know, how we can balance those two.
There's always friction between the engineers and the architects.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. So, well, and, and, you know, we need to, we, we need to hear that ourselves so that, you know, we know what we're getting into. So it's, because I, I think ultimately, we prefer something that has a little bit more aesthetics to it. But if we know that we're going to have to replace it just a few years down the road, at least from my perspective, you know, the, the fiscal accountability usually is high and above the number one, trying to make sure that I'm a good steward of the resident's tax dollars. So, you know, the aesthetics comes down the list from there. It's definitely on it, but.
I wish you were in many design meetings that we had.
Well, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one more question for you, Tom.
Councilmember Woods.
I got one more question for you. So with the Arbor, have we focused on the, I guess that would be the, the southeast corner of Rockfield and El Toro. What about the, the northeast side of El Toro in that Arbor section? Are we, is that in the proposal to renovate?
Absolutely. So that would stay the same that council has seen before.
Okay.
So the general design council's seen before.
My last suggestion for the city, if it's okay with those that are bidding to be there, can we turn the lights back on, the Arbor, on structures? Because we've got it fenced off and the homeless aren't there any longer. So can we put the lights back on, please, as our entry of our city?
Let us look into that and how much we had to take out for some of the repair work that, that we were doing and.
Why, I know the lights are still up.
Yes, we'll let us look back into that.
The lights are still up.
Yes.
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 So that would be my only ad, to look into turning the lights back on, the entry of our city at the Arbor. I'll call for the vote.
One moment. Mayor Motaz, did you have any comments?
No, I do not.
Okay, now we'll call for the vote. There's a motion and a second for staff recommendation. You have everything you need on that recommendation?
Mayor Motaz?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. We'll go to number, item number 11, Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Program, fiscal year 2019-2020, Annual Action Plan Amendment for Updates to Small Business COVID-19 Relief Grant Program. City Manager?
Mayor, members of the council, I'd like to bring up Gail Ackerman, our Director of Community Development, to introduce this item.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening.
Okay, good evening, Mayor and Council. And I'd like to introduce Ron Santos, our Senior Planner, and also our CDBG Consultant, Mike Lenaris. They're here this evening with a brief presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. This item is a minor amendment to the fiscal year 1920 CDBG Annual Action Plan for the purpose of reallocating funds to the urgent need category and for modifications to the city's COVID-19 Small Business Assistance Grant Program. As the city council may recall, the 1920 Action Plan was recently amended to allocate CARES Act CDBG coronavirus funds, some of which were designated for grants to small businesses. Since that action, SBDC, the city's nonprofit partner in administering the grants, recommended changes to the city's program based on their recent experience assisting the county and other cities with their respective grant programs. Following SBDC's recommendation, the city council's CDBG ad hoc committee reconvened to consider changes to the grant program. In addition, HUD recently issued new guidance and waivers applicable to the program, which warranted further changes. The recommended changes include, recommended changes to the program include reprogramming urgent need funding from potential city expenditures to urgent need small business grants. This will make available up to $85,000 for $1,000 grants to small businesses as aid in response to the pandemic. Urgent need spending has fewer documentation requirements for grant applicants and will allow the city to disperse funds more quickly. Along with this reprogramming is a new set of program guidelines provided as Attachment 1 to your staff reports. Additional recommendations include increasing the maximum grant amount from $1,000 to $5,000 for the non-urgent need grant, increasing the number of employees an eligible business may have from 25 to 50, allowing non-urgent need grants to be used for rent payments reimbursement in addition to the previously approved utility payment and PPE purchase reimbursements. And finally, taking advantage of a new HUD waiver by eliminating the need for grant applicants to provide income documentation for the entire household of each employee in favor of providing only information on income earned directly from the business receiving the grant. The recommended changes are expected to facilitate the process of applying for administering the grant program. With that, I'll conclude my presentation. But as Ms. Ackerman mentioned, happy to answer any questions as well as our CDBG Consultant, Mr. Mike Lenaris.
Colleagues, you have questions before we see if there's any public comment? Councilmember Voits?
First of all, I want to thank Councilman Teddermer for sitting through the ad hoc with you and staff. Thank you, Ron, for your diligence. And thank you to Mark for our grant program. This is a $1,000 grant is separate from the urgent need grant of 1,000 to 5,000?
Correct.
So there's two grants possibly available to businesses? Are either one of them, do either one of them have less employees available to, 10 or more? Or what's the second grant one?
Under the draft guidelines, Councilmember, both programs would have the same limit on employees, up to 50.
From 25 to 50?
Correct.
Okay. Some of that grant money can be used for rent payback reimbursements during the COVID crisis?
So the change to allow the rent reimbursement would apply only to the non-urgent need program? The, it's our belief that the rent reimbursement may not meet HUD's requirements for urgent need spending.
I'm happy with it. I'll make a motion, but still allow comments. But I'd like to move the item and thank staff, thank Councilman Teddermer for sitting on the ad hoc. And I moved the item, but leave it open.
Councilor Teddermer?
Thank you and thank you, Councilmember Voits. And I echo those comments back. It was a pleasure to sit with you and work with you on this. It's kind of a head scratcher just because we start to realize that the free money isn't sometimes not so attractive and amazing what we have to do to try and help induce people to pursue it. So I hope this is a change that does elicit the reaction, we hope, and it does get these dollars moving for us. So thank you to Councilmember Voits and thank you to staff for the good work and the help with our fine consultant to help navigate this. And I second the motion. Thank you.
Point of clarification. What is the total dollar amount that we have to distribute to local businesses? I don't see that in the report.
So for the urgent need component, it would be up to $85,000 in $1,000 grants. And for the, for the non-urgent need, it would be $100,000. No, actually, $100,000 in the 2021 fiscal year program. And then the total amount would be 117 through 84, including 1920 and then 2021 allocations.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Councilman...
We're going to see, are there any members of the public wishing to comment on this item?
I've received no speaker cards for the site.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Call for the vote?
Councilman Robinson?
Sorry, Councilman Robinson?
Just real quick, Mr. Santos. So how many businesses did we reach out to? I see that, so we approved it and then SBDC advised that it might not be enough based on their experience with the Fifth Supervisory District. So did we actually reach out to businesses during that interim? Or are we just basing this increase on that?
The latter. We had not directly reached out to businesses. But SBDC, in addition to administering the fund for the county's Fifth Supervisory District, is also assisting several other cities in the county with their grant programs. And so relying on that feedback from SBDC is what the recommendation is based on.
Okay. And, you know, I know that some of this is kind of more the bureaucratic process and some of it is the dollar amount. So, you know, from that feedback that they're receiving from other cities, businesses that actually went through the process or looked at it and said they weren't, is it more paperwork driven? Is it more the dollar amount? Do we have any, does maybe Mr. Lenaris have some anecdotes based on those other cities' experiences? So I'm just kind of curious because, I mean, we can play around with this right now, but I'm just wondering what the big challenge is in all of it. So, you know, initially, our big focus was how do we help small businesses? And you can define small businesses, everything from, you know, mom and pop up to, some definitions have fewer than 500 employees. So, you know, I know we're changing that definition around, but...
Good evening, Council. As Ron indicated, it really is based on feedback from SBDC, understanding the paperwork that's required. A lot of bureaucracy, these are federal dollars, especially with the CDBG Community Development Block Grant. The requirement to serve low and moderate income individuals still stays with the funding. So that's really elevated some of the paperwork. And I think, again, based on the feedback of SBDC, also working with other neighboring cities that use the same funding source to try to run the same types of programs, those programs, the grants started out at about 10, $10,000 to $5,000. Initially, the program here was designed for $1,000. So that's why the feedback came back, it's like, hey, we're having trouble at 5,000 and 10,000 getting the paperwork. At $1,000, you guys are really going to be spinning your wheels. So we just felt it was, the program hadn't started yet, hadn't been brought out to the community yet. So it was a good time to retool it before we had kind of go through those frustrations.
Okay, I appreciate the response there. And one thing that I would suggest to staff is that may we reach out to some other cities who are having the same problem and try to send a letter to the federal government explaining how, you know, the onerous paperwork process is what's really causing, you know, a big challenge, I think, for small businesses out there. Obviously, they'd like as much money as they want, but the bigger the dollar amount that we disperse, the fewer businesses that we can help. But, you know, so, and I know what they're trying to do because they're trying to alleviate fraud. So they need some paperwork filled out to make sure that people aren't just taking advantage of money that's out there. And we saw that with PPP loans where some people were taking in excess of million-dollar loans that were going to get forgiven. And I've heard of at least one occasion where a guy went out and bought a Lamborghini with it and had actual no business operation going on at all. And I think that was pretty well-publicized. So I know what their intent is, but when we're talking about these small dollar, trying to help a small business, you know, and a city who's trying to make sure that its existing businesses that it knows well, obviously DC wouldn't know, you know, John's Nail Salon or something like that, but we would, that we can, you know, regulate that and make sure that it gets to the appropriate person without a voluminous amount of bureaucratic red tape they need to jump through for $1,000. You know, I can understand how they'd be frustrated. They're like, I'm just trying to run my small business right now. I don't have time to fill out some paperwork. As much as I really need the $1,000, I need to make sure that my business is operating.
Absolutely. And I think that's where the input of the council members was very valuable because they know the business community here and we were able to kind of have that type of discussion. But very valid points. And I think a lot of people who have used these resources for the purpose are running into that same frustration. And I know, listening to webinars from the Assistant Secretary who, at HUD, who is managing, is responsible for these dollars, they recognize that it's, there's a lot of barriers there to get the money on the streets. So I think these changes will help try to get that money based on the original design of the program. This should, hopefully, will help out.
Great. Well, I'm optimistic, but again, I just make that suggestion to the city staff that, you know, we look at some other cities where we try to band together and say, look, this is kind of ridiculous. We're trying to help small businesses and, you know, they just don't want to go through this, you know, significant bureaucratic red tape. So, thanks again, appreciate the time.
Mayor Motazidi, do you have any comments before we move forward?
I do not. Thank you.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second. We'll call for the vote.
Mayor Motazidi, may I have your vote, please?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And that brings us to item number 12, a resolution opposing Proposition 15 on the November 3, 2020 ballot. Madam City Manager?
Mayor, members of the council, we have a presentation by management analyst Nicole Miller. It's very brief, but just to introduce the item for the benefit of the public.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. At its meeting of August 18, City Councilmember Voits obtained consensus to consider a resolution stating the city's opposition to Proposition 15 on the upcoming November 3 ballot. Proposition 15 is known as the Tax on Commercial and Industrial Properties for Education and Local Government Funding Initiative. It would amend the California Constitution to require commercial and industrial properties, with some exceptions, to be taxed on market value as opposed to purchase price. Tax assessments on residential properties are not affected by this proposition and would still be taxed based on purchase price. Therefore, this proposal would create what is known as a split role within the county assessor's office as the properties on the tax roll would be assessed using different standards. Opponents to Proposition 15 note that it removes protections for commercial and industrial property owners set in place by Proposition 13. Additionally, the effects of Proposition 15 could place added burdens on two California businesses already suffering from the economic impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic. Opponents of the proposition also state that Proposition 15 has the potential to affect jobs and wages, increase the price of goods and services, and increase the cost of doing business in the state. The city council's adopted 2020 legislative platform includes language opposing alterations to Proposition 13, including a split real property tax role that would affect commercial property. Therefore, a resolution expressing opposition to this proposition is within the purview of the city's legislative platform. For these reasons, staff is recommending that the city council adopt a resolution opposing Proposition 15. And this concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. Do we have any members of the public wishing to speak?
No additional speakers.
Councilmember Voits?
We're in extraordinary times, and I know that this has been talked about for a long time. But Proposition 15 is a $10 to $12 billion tax increase on every California at a time we cannot afford it. Our businesses can't survive another hit, and the businesses need to thrive to produce jobs for us. We in the state of California have the highest state income tax in the nation. Our sales tax is among the highest in the nation at 7.25, just recently brought down from 7.5 when Proposition 30 wore off. That was a school bond. And in combination with our local taxes, tax rates in some areas go as high as 10.25. The average is 8.86 right now. Additional excise taxes on gasoline, cigarettes, among the highest in the nation, our gas tax is 12 cents, highest in the nation. California's gas averages $2.93 a gallon. National average is $1.90 per gallon. I put this on to try to save our businesses, not only here, but in the state of California, because if we add these extra burdens to the businesses, the industries of California, flight would be drastic. And so I encourage support in, supporting the resolution to oppose Proposition 15 by the state, city of Cal, the city of Lake Forest.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Can I make a comment?
Mayor Motazidi?
I would like to just make a quick comment. Yeah, thank you. You know, this, this split role tax could be devastating economically for the state of California. We are already ranked 48th out of 50 states in the 2020 State Business Climate Index. So this potentially will reassess properties every three years. And also, it redefines what a, what a commercial industrial real property will be. So, and it also changes the vote that we had in the state of California on Prop 13, which keeps our taxes low and our assessments cycles different. And so it's concerning because our tax bill that is brought to the state and local government is for schools. And the school was given over $100 billion in the state of California last year. So I'm just, I'm sorry, $1 billion. So it's confusing. I don't know how much money the schools need, and they're still faring very poorly. So this is a very concerning proposition. I really hope it fails, and I'm glad we're drafting this resolution. So I support it.
Thank you, Mayor Motazidi. Any other comments? Here are none. There's a motion and a second. We'll call for the vote.
I vote aye. Madam Clerk, thank you.
Clarification for staff. This includes the resolution, please. Thank you.
Mayor and council members, there's some technical difficulties, so we're going to do a roll call vote. Mayor Motazidi already voted yes, I heard. So let's start with Councilmember Voits.
Yes.
Mayor Protem James?
Aye.
Councilmember Teddermer?
Aye.
And Councilmember Robinson?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Madam City Manager, do you have anything further this evening?
I have nothing further this evening.
That brings us to council comments. Councilmember Robinson?
I have nothing further this evening.
Councilmember Teddermer?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I just wanted to acknowledge my attendance at the Orange County Sheriff's Department Medal of Valor. And a great event, as always, a little bit different this year because of replanning and whatnot. So it wasn't quite the same, but it was still a great event, great to recognize the hard work of so many folks in the Sheriff's Department. So it was a great event, so, thank you.
Councilmember Voits?
I too was at the Medal of Valor and always good to see our law enforcement being recognized for their good work, outstanding. Because if you look at the rest of the nation and the chaos that's going on, we don't see that in California. We don't see, we don't see that in Orange County because of the work of our Orange County Sheriff's Department... that in Orange County because of the work of our Orange County Sheriff's Department and law enforcement agencies throughout the county. So, I, we're just blessed to have the Orange County Sheriff's Department patrol our streets. And like I always say, we're the proud home of the Saddleback Substation. I'm very proud of that. So, it was a great time. And it was good to see former deputies that were here at one time doing good works in other parts of the county. But it was good to see them. Nothing further.
Mayor Motazidi?
I have no additional comments. Thank you.
Thank you. And then, I also attended the Medal of Valor. It was a great event along with Councilman Teddermer and Councilmember Voits. Very nice to see the deputies get recognized and a lot of old family members that we know from many, many years ago when they were children. So, fun to see all them and attend the event. So, with that, we will stand in adjournment until our next meeting. Thank you.